Is tolling fifty-nine thousand dollars to the EDA revolving loan fund, which together with the remaining balance that we had of twenty-five thousand dollars from the original appropriation, that those funds were used to provide a low interest loan loan to an eligible county small business. By December thirty-first of this year, we we expect to collect the subject amount in additional repaid principal, interest and fees. And we expect to award loans to at least to additional eligible county businesses. Beyond FY twenty-three, we do plan to include these projected principal repayments and interest in our annual budget submission to help streamline this process.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Howie. Any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
That's Councilman Pelt.
Thank you. Mr. Howie, how do we promote these small business loans? How does a small business owner know that they're available? Do we have business liaisons that are targeting certain areas?
Yes, we do. We actually, yeah, we actually make sure that a wide variety of people are aware of the loans. We promote it on our website. We work through local lending institutions, business associations, accounting firms, and of course, the Small Business Administration and the Department of Commerce. We even reach out to real estate brokers. So we do cast a wide net. There's always more that we can do in outreach. That's that's one of my priorities moving forward is ensure that as many people are aware and really believe that the opportunities are actually out there because that's really part of the challenge that we have. They may hear it, but they don't think it's for them. So we have to make sure that that we that we really, I think, ramp up our outreach in this effort.
Are we working with chambers of commerce?
Yes.
For example, you know, let's say the Rice or Sound Road Card or Inter Beltway, the Liberty Road Card or Inter Beltway. Are we working with those small businesses that may not be aware that they could get, you know, facade improvements or whatever to to make their business more attractive, not only aesthetically, but also attractive for for their customers and clientele?
Yes, we do that. And our Department of Planning also has represented, they have representatives that attend various business association meetings and ensure that that the county actually does promote all of our loan financing programs that can help with beautification and just other needed funds for our small businesses.
Who is your point person in your office that kind of administers this that I could be in touch with?
You would start, okay, you would start with Todd Dolben, our senior manager on the economic development side of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Pelt. Any additional questions or comments? There are none. Thank you very much, Director Howie. We will move right along to page eighteen. Colonel Dennis Del.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and fellow council members. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Modulus LLC to provide biohazard and trauma cleanup services at locations to include buildings and vehicles within or near the boundaries of the county on an as-needed basis. The contract commences upon council approval, continues for one year, and will renew automatically for four additional one-year periods with the option to extend the initial term or any renewal term in additional one-hundred-and-twenty days. Compensation may not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for the entire five-year, four-month term, including the renewal and extension periods. Services include, but are not limited to, cleaning cleaning up blood, vomit, feces and urine on the interior and exterior areas of buildings and vehicles and police vehicles. The county awarded the contract through a competitive procurement process based on a low bid from six bids received. Just for historical purposes, on September fifth, two thousand seventeen, the council approved a similar four-year, seven-month contract that went into effect on April first, two thousand seventeen with Nor Environmental Group. And the expenditures for that term for four years and seven months totaled sixteen thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Thank you very much, Colonel Del. I think this is a very important service because so many times when these things happen, I know in the old days, they would call us out and the fire department just sort of holds things down. Sometimes we did a good job, or at least we did the best job we could, but sometimes there was still things there that the community would see for quite some time. And I don't think that's good for anyone. Any additional questions or comments from the members? There are none. Thank you very much, Colonel.
Thank you.
We'll move on to page twenty-two. Christina Lewis, Purchase Order.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Forgive me, this is my first time presenting, so I'm gonna vibe right in, but any help would be appreciated. So going over the summary, we're requesting an amendment to a contract purchase order. Oh, forgive me.
Okay, we're here now. There you go. There you go.
So this is to provide pavement condition evaluation services for roadways in Baltimore County. So each year, field personnel drive the county's eighty-eight hundred roads, rate their surface conditions, poor, fair and good, based on their personal expertise. Their paper notes are consolidated into a spreadsheet, which is used to prioritize these road paving, prioritize road paving and maintenance. So OCNL will provide an evaluation of the entire county road network pavements using three-D laser scanning, data processing, data analysis, pavement condition indexing to determine the conditions of the roadway. This project would better align the process with asset management standards, allow remote data entry, better integration with GIS and provide the county access to the data required for comprehensive analysis to better assess the prioritization of maintenance based on failing road conditions. If approved by council, total compensation paid to OCNL shall not exceed the sum of five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars during the entire term of the agreement. And the funds for this project are in the county's current budget. Funds are used in support of our staff who currently perform this task as part of their standard job-related duties. OCNL will perform the same task using light R technology, but they remove the subjective component from the current manual process. This analysis will allow the county to prioritize spending and pave the most critical areas first. This contract would be a cooperative purchase off Montgomery County Agreement currently in place until the end of December. And these, the purchase order is to be in place until the services are complete.
Well, Ms. Lewis, welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here today. You are doing the most excellent job. And let me just say this, you need any help prioritizing the roads to be repaid? That's what we are here for as councilmen. We all know our roads better than anyone, and we will be more than happy, as we always do, to tell you where you need to pay first and quickly. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Uh, Councilman Marks, there he is.
Well, thank you. You knew I would jump in, right? Yeah, thank you for your your testimony, and I'm not going to ask any questions. You did a nice job. I would second what the chair said. There is no substitute, quite frankly, for human input sometimes. And we are elected to represent our constituents who have many opinions on roads that need to be improved. So I would hope that this administration and future administrations would continue to take those opinions. The other thing I would hope is that we are putting on the internet these ratings, or we are better communicating the long-term road resurfacing program. But I certainly do agree that getting an appropriate estimate of the lifecycle costs for the entire road network is an admirable goal. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any additional questions or comments from the members? There are none. Thank you very much, Ms. Christina Lewis. You did a most excellent job for your first time. And if I hit a bell, I would ring it for you. So I'll, I'll do what I can. Thank you very much. Sure. So now we will move on to page thirty-six. Ms. Raul Lavoy, Board of Elections?
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi. So thank you, Mr. Chair and and council members. The Board of Elections is requesting the approval of two purchase orders, one with Butler Security and one with Metropolitan Protective Services to provide unarmed overnight roving patrol of the ballot boxes during the twenty-twenty-two gubernatorial general election cycle. Maryland law requires monitoring of these boxes. There are a total of thirty-five ballot boxes throughout Baltimore County. However, one is located inside the UMBC, University of Maryland Baltimore County, the Commons Building. So a guard or security is not needed for that box. The unarmed overnight roving patrol will provide service to the remaining thirty-four ballot boxes. Each vendor will be responsible to patrol their assigned ballot box locations. Overnight patrol would be performed during the hours and at the frequency determined by the Board of Elections. Right now, tentatively, every two hours between five-thirty PM and seven AM, which is when the buildings are closed. If appropriate, the Board of Elections may adjust the time and frequency of patrols as needed. Due to the staffing requirements to patrol the thirty-four ballot boxing boxes, purchasing divided the the list of locations between the two vendors. On Election Day, which is November eighth, twenty-twenty-two, the coverage period will end at eight PM when all ballot boxes have been, or all ballots have been removed from the ballot boxes and the boxes are locked and secured by my staff. The total combined cost for the service is two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty dollars. Service delivery would begin approximately forty-four days prior to Election Day when the ballot boxes are delivered. The request, this PO request is for the approval of the two purchase orders for the twenty-twenty gubernatorial general election only. However, a multi-year contract for each vendor will be presented to council on an upcoming agenda. The multi-year agreement will allow the Board of Elections to have the service readily available for future election cycles, and the contract will commence September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Pelt.
Ms. Lavoy, I just want to commend you on the outstanding job that you did in this most recent primary election.
Thank you.
I think I was, I watched the mail-in votes being counted remotely, and it was mesmerizing, almost hypnotizing. But the folks, the volunteers that you had could not be hypnotized. They had to be laser focused on each ballot they opened, and they worked in pairs. And it was really an outstanding effort. And, you know, elections, Ms. Lavoy, are key to our democracy and our democracy being strong. And I can't tell you how I, how appreciative I am of you, Ms. Lavoy, for how you stood up for democracy in this past election. And it might have been easier if you could have counted those mail-in votes or had them prepared in some way prior to Election Day, but you had to wait until after the election was over to even begin any kind of effort to count those votes. And again, Ms. Lavoy, thank you for standing up for our democracy and thank you for what you, your team and everyone that participated in the counting of votes during this primary election. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Pelt. We all agree. Any additional questions or comments? There are none. Thank you very much. We will move on to page thirty-nine. Ms. Rosalyn Johnson, Cal Ripken Foundation.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Council Chair, Council members. The administration is requesting approval of a contract for a public-private partnership, a P three, with the Cal Ripken Fund Senior Foundation Incorporated to enable the foundation to construct a multipurpose field, athletic field, for public use at the county fields at Renaissance Park, which is located on Stemmer's Run Road in the Essex-Stemmers community. Once constructed, the county will own, operate and maintain the facilities, with the foundation having the right for up to, to host up to ten youth-oriented events per year. The contract commences upon council approval, if approved, and continues until midnight on the twentieth anniversary of the date of substantial completion of the facility. The contract can be renewed for up to ten additional one-year periods, provided the foundation or its affiliates continue to conduct programs consistent with the mission of helping underserved youth through sports-themed programs. And this is one thing that the administration has challenged us to to do to maximize county dollars by finding partners to work with us to complete projects. And so this is an excellent example. Of the estimated two-point-three-million-dollar project cost, the county will contribute directly two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from county funds and about seven-hundred-thousand dollars from the federal funds, ARPA. And the state of Maryland has given a grant of about one-point-two million, and the foundation will provide the remaining funds. So the county residents and visitors will get a two-point-three-million-dollar field for the cost of about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars directly from county coffers. Additionally, this field, we thought we were going to have to phase it in, but we were fortunate to find matching money thanks to the administration and to council approval. And thanks to the state, we're able to do the lighting as well as the other accoutrements that come along with lighting, such as the stands and other, and the scoreboard, sorry, and the scoreboard. So this is a very exciting venture for us.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
All righty, here, Councilman.
Yeah, Director Johnson, just curiosity, with the lights that are being installed, are they the new lights, the ones that don't shine into people's houses?
Correct. This park is is in a larger area. It's a larger park area. But lighting pollution has been reduced because we will be utilizing LED lights for this project, which also is better for the environment as well.
Absolutely. And and when do the lights shut out?
It depends on programming at the site. If there's a game that goes until nine o'clock or nine thirty, we certainly don't stop in the middle of the game and shut the lights out. But it just really depends on programming. At certain sites, we do keep our lights on until about nine o'clock at night if we have some certain issues or problems in that particular location, but it just varies from site to site.
Okay, good. Thank, thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome.
Good news, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead.
Director Johnson, I just want to thank you and the administration. This is a fantastic addition to the park system in Baltimore County and specifically in the Seventh District. I remember when, it was probably during your your confirmation hearing, talking to you about how we take care and improve our parks. And I've had this conversation with the the county executive when he first took office. And we have some exciting things going on in the in the Seventh District, and I'm very pleased. And I want to thank you and your staff and and the administration for their efforts in this because a P three is not an easy thing to cobble together. And the funding sources that you've been able to attract for this particular project are, it's a myriad of funding sources, so it's not easy to build this house with so many different types of of entities involved. So I'm sure that it took a lot of time and effort to get to the point where this can come before the council. And again, just very excited for this particular project in Essex. It's it's well-deserved in that area that has, quite frankly, in past administrations, has sort of fallen by the wayside with its treatment in in our park system in the in the Seventh District. So thank you again, and really looking forward to this vote on Monday night and looking forward to the ribbon cutting when we can get this thing opened and and we can see people using the the new park. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I thank you. We have a great team here in the county in restoration and parks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Brant. Any additional questions or comments from the members? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And now we will move on to Ms. Deb Schindler with a several contracts in agreement, starting with page forty-seven. Ms. Schindler?
Good evening, County Councilman President and members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity tonight. You're right, I I do have several, so I'll get started. The administration is requesting an approval of a contract for PBI Commercial to provide the fire, water, remediation and mitigation and restoration of services for Baltimore County buildings based on an as-needed basis. We will be utilizing the Johns Hopkins University Applied Physics Laboratories Contract for these services that was already previously competitively bid based on the best value, experience and best qualified. The estimated compensation totals forty-two thousand and forty-one dollars for the initial two months and another one-million-two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-and-fifty-five cents for the entire approximately four-year and six-month term with all of the renewals and extension periods. We use this contract primarily for large water intrusion that comes into the buildings. Unfortunately, when those things happen with leaks or floods, to help us assist with not only drying out the area, but also testing the area to ensure that we have completely dried out the area and determine when it is appropriate to close back the area up and complete all of the repairs. That is my, into my testimony. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take it on this contract.
Any questions or comment? Move right along, Ms. Schindler.
How are you? Thank you. The administration is also requesting an approval and an agreement with Lighting Maintenance, Inc., Key System, Inc.'s and Crown Electric Company to provide an on-call electrical service at various county-owned and operated buildings. This is also a very competitive bid process that occurred with best qualified, low bid and most experienced. It does have an MBE of twenty percent. This contract, under this contract, the agreement will not exceed the five-million-four-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars for the entire term of this agreement, which is one-year term with four one-year additional agreements. This type of service is used inside our buildings or on the lighting directly outside of the buildings, typically in renovation or new construction build-outs that we're doing, any major repairs that are required to any of the facilities, and also any high-voltage electrical work that occurs here in the county. I can take any questions if you like, sir.
Questions or comments from the members? Okay, Ms. Schindler, moving right along to page fifty-four.
Great. The administration is requesting the approval of a contract for JBA Consulting Engineers, which is also known as NV Five Consultants, to perform reviews of an annual measurement and verification reports that are going to be submitted by our ESCOs who are performing the energy performance contracting for the county government on the buildings that we are doing the EPCs with. In addition to that use, we also have the option to use it for other services with the EPCs with developing phasing, aiding in the development of energy and cost baselines for the energy performance contracts, the lead certification review, and also with the installing sub-meters or temporary data loggers on our EPC equipment. This contract is a MBE of three percent. It is competitively bid and was awarded for best qualified, best value, experience and competitiveness. It is a, we are basically utilizing the Maryland State Contract that was already executed. And it is a one-year with three one-year renewals. And I, in the event that we shall not pay the vendor any more than five-hundred-thousand dollars for the entire life of the term of this contract, including the renewals. I guess, any questions? Yes, sir.
I do have one question. I heard you say MBE of three percent. How does that work? Three percent?
Three, I know. I asked the same thing. Thank you. It turned out that the, when we're piget, we're utilizing this contract that was already competitively bid by the state of Maryland, they actually awarded, the state actually awarded a three percent MBE. So we, as a county, are accepting the contract terms as they are stated. And so that is why, oddly enough, I I don't, can't explain why the state chose such an awkward number. But that is what the state had had chosen, so we follow suit for the contract.
Okay, we can discuss it later, I guess, not to belabor it right now. Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Schindler.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Pelt.
So, Mr. Chair, I share your concern about the three percent MBE. When I heard that, I thought, wow, that's extremely light. And and with Ms. Schindler's explanation, I was just wondering if the Board of Public Works at the state of Maryland approved this, and knowing that it was such a low MBE participation level. You know, it seems to me, if it did go to the Port of Board of Public Works, that at that entry point of the contract or that initial approval, there should have been some some input from one of the members that that that's an extremely low MBE level, MBE participation. So do you know if it went, I don't know if you are aware or not, if it went to the Board of Public Works?
I'm not sure, sir. I do have the contract number, and I can look into that. But I do know it was bid competitively through the state of Maryland, but I can definitely confirm that it went to the Board of Public Works. I'm not sure whether, how they actually routed this one.
Okay, yeah, I'd be curious about that, Ms. Schindler, because, you know, we are gonna, I believe we're gonna have an all-new Board of Public Works in the next year. But if that went through the Board of Public Works, it seems like something that should have been looked at more closely. I know, and I've, I staffed the Board of Public Works for eight years, and you're looking at binders that are, you know, eight inches thick. And so I can see how things could slip through, but I think three percent MBE participation is low, it's the lowest level I've ever heard in all the years working in government.
And it seemed odd to us. That's why we double-checked, because it's not like five percent. It was an odd three percent. But we did double-check, and that is what the state said. Madam Mayo, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, I mean, I'm sure we'll, like I said, we can talk about and get to the bottom of it. There may be some logical explanation that we just don't know right now. Yes, Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Councilmember Pelt. You know, we share your concern, but I will say here in the county, you know, we have a fifteen percent MBE goal and a target. But I'm pleased to say that over the last few years, many of our contracts are well above that. On average, sometimes twenty percent or more. But in this case, sometimes we have a trade-off for getting the best value and being able to use a cooperative agreement to try to expeditiously move things through. So sometimes there's trade-offs, but we will find out. I don't know that this was a Board of Public Works contract. I believe that this, we will double-check, but I believe this is a part, departmental level contract, because, you know, when we look to leverage, we look across the spectrum of of contracts available at the state level to us because they put in the front work of competitive bid process, you know, that cuts down on some of the work we have to do, but we will double-check. But I'm
So Ms. Rogers, are you saying it might have just gone through DGS at the state?
Right, we'll double-check, but it's not always the case that the contracts that that we access have to go through Board of Public Works. We're going to double-check to see and drill down a little bit more on this three percent, which is, you know, in my experience as well, is pretty odd, but we will see where it came from. It may not have been a Board of Public Works-approved contract. We have to just look at it, and Ms. Schindler and I will take that on. But but be be very, very assured that here in the county that here in the county, every single contract that comes through, we discuss at the pre-submission level the status of the termination of MBE goal. Every contract that comes up to you all, that's one of our standard business process questions now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions, comments? All right, Ms. Shindel, I believe you have another.
Yes, thank you. Two more.
Fifty-eight, fifty-eight.
The administration is requesting an approval of a contract with Gold Service, Inc., Remac USA, Inc., and Barco Enterprise, Inc. for on-call demo services. The contractor will provide all labor, supervision, material, services, equipment, incidentals, and related items necessary to provide demolition services here in Baltimore County. This is an initial one-year contract with four one-year renewals. It has an MBE, MBE goal of twenty-five percent. It was competitive bid, best qualified, experience, and low bid. I do want to mention that this contract, in the life of it, cannot exceed the three million, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifteen cents for the entire term of the contract, and that this contract is an enterprise-wide contract. So this also is a contract that is used not only by property management to deal with structures that are on county property, but I do know that, I do believe, planning has also used this contract for other services as needed.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you. All right, Ms. Shindel, last but certainly not least.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you very much for indulging me this evening. The administration is requesting the approval of an amendment to a contract for Cannon Washington, Inc. to perform a comprehensive facility assessment in a multi-year improvement plan for the Baltimore County Public Schools, request for proposal for number P dash two-four-nine entitled "The Multi-Year Improvement Plan for the Baltimore County Public Schools." This was a contract that already has come in front of you. This total compensation on the PO that was issued for thirteen-six-oh-nine for Cannon Washington will increase by one million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars to three million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. This is a contract that has twenty-five percent MBE. You're probably very well aware of how the Baltimore County Public School system utilized this as my, my I-PASS. We here in the county will be doing something very similar with all of our two hundred and thirty buildings that we have on our registry. This is the first time in history that the county has undertaken a project of this type to do a complete assessment of each building in a comprehensive manner, very similar to the I-PASS, and that we will be looking at items that are of all of our mechanical systems, all of our roofs, all of our exterior structures, ADA, all of those types of things, so that we can get a, a very comprehensive report of not only of what condition that these buildings are in, but also what is actually, what type of equipment we have in our facilities. And then, once we receive this comprehensive report, we will then be using this tool to help drive our capital planning, very similar, obviously, to what the Baltimore County Public Schools are doing. So this is a cooperative agreement that we'd like to utilize with your permission, and I would love to take any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Shindel. We'll move on to page sixty-six. Page Thomas, Real Estate Compliance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Councilmembers. The administration is requesting approval of a contract to acquire an unimproved property totaling approximately three-point-three-seven acres for one million dollars in order to construct a new senior center in northern Baltimore County. The county will terminate the lease for the existing Hereford Senior Center location upon the opening of the new facility, and this facility is in the Parkton area. The property consists of unimproved, mostly cleared, raw land. The county's appraisal consultant completed an appraisal of the property effective February of this year and recommended a value of eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. The county's review appraiser concurred with that appraisal. The one million dollar settlement price includes prepaid site development costs incurred by the owner for things such as road widening, paving, curb and gutter repair that were completed during work on the adjacent property and not reflected in the appraisal. The county would have incurred these costs as part of the future development of the site to ensure safe ingress and egress to the property. However, since the adjacent site was developed first, it was deemed more economical for the current owner to include the work on both sites. As mentioned, the county intends to use the property as the site of a new senior center in northern Baltimore County. The county currently leases the existing Hereford Senior Center location, which is on the second floor of the Hereford Volunteer Fire Hall for two days per week at an approximate cost of twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars annually. The county will terminate that lease upon the opening of the new center. Construction is expected to begin in April, twenty-twenty-four and will be completed in April, twenty-twenty-five. Construction costs are estimated to total approximately two million dollars. The fiscal year twenty-twenty capital budgets, North County Senior Center project, project appropriation included three million dollars in general funds for this project. This acquisition is the only plant, only planned one for this capital project. As of July twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, three thousand has been encumbered and expended for project expenses, excluding the amount encumbered for the acquisition itself. And I think Laura Riley, who is the head of the Office of Aging, is on this call as well.
Yes, we're just very excited at the possibility of, of building in the Hereford area, and I'm just here to answer any questions that you all certainly have of the agency.
Well, Ms. Rogers.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilmember Catch.
Yeah, I, I've had a smile on my face during this whole conversation, and I, I appreciate so much the work of the administration and Director Riley and in, in this purchase of land to build a senior center in Hereford. You, you all don't realize how difficult it is to purchase land in northern Baltimore County that doesn't have restrictions on it. I mean, you know that we, we're in this very aggressive program to put land and ag preservation, et cetera, and you cannot purchase land like that and build a senior center, because we have the land in preservation. So I, I just appreciate the administration so much for what you've done. It's going to be near the Grau's Shopping Center, so it's going to be very convenient for the seniors going to be able to, if they go to the senior center, going to be able to shop. So there's good, there's a couple gasoline stations there. So it's a fantastic location. And again, I, I want to thank the county executive administration for all your work. They've kept me up to date with the issues of purchasing the property, how much was requested and how, what the assessment was, et cetera. So this is, this is such good news for northern Baltimore County, and I also want to thank the administration and the county executive. I handed the county executive a request each year, a request sheet with about thirty different things on them that our district needs, and these are not things that I invent. These are, we have public input meetings. I ask constituents for what our needs are in the district, and this administration has been so cooperative in trying to provide the third district with what is needed to improve life in the area. So thank you so much. And Laura, just one thing, you know, the, the Hereford Volunteer Fire Company has its fair in the fall every year in the back of where the senior center is going to be, and they've asked that there be a way to utilize the parking lot to access the land in back, which is used for their fall festival. And so I, I've said something to the county executive about it, and I, I don't think it should be a problem to accommodate them and their, their needs. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Catch. I, I have a quick question for you, Ms. Riley. We certainly are very excited about new services for our seniors throughout Baltimore County. I'm excited about the addition of being built in Woodlawn, and I'm very excited about the one in Hereford as well. My question is, with the money we're going to spend, are we going to have a sign in front of the senior building?
Um, I, I, it's always our anticipation to have a sign in front of our buildings. I believe it won't be lighted, but we'll have to figure out, we'll have to figure out the constraints that may be in effect in the zoning up there. There will be a sign of sorts. Of course, we want people to be able to identify the property, but we'll follow the zoning requirements.
No problem. Not just identify the property, but I imagine we want them to know the great programs that are taking place inside that rotate from time to time. Sometimes we're helping with taxes, sometimes we have trips, sometimes we have speakers. Am I correct?
Absolutely. Most of our centers do have signs that we can change the messaging on them.
Okay, thank you very much. That was a little prelude to my Councilman Marx. That's a little shot.
And I, and I'm very glad the director is putting up a neighborhood-friendly sign.
Good.
This, this, Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Councilmember Catch.
Yeah, our secretary of the council sent correspondence regarding signs, and if my memory serves me right, there's one legal opinion that basically, well, gives the county more leverage as far as what kinds of signs that the county can put up in front of county buildings. So, you know, we might want to keep that in mind for the senior centers as well as the, the schools. So I think there's some leverage there that is in place. So you're right, we got to keep our seniors and up to date as to what's happening, and because the number of seniors is expanding in the county. I'm, I'm, you know, well, basically, I'm Benjamin Button, and I get younger every year. So, you know, this won't affect me eventually, but, but I, I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
You know, I noticed you were getting younger, Councilmember Catch, and I, I, I thought maybe it was my imagination, but that explains everything.
Yeah, I've always liked you. Yeah.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Potoka.
Well, this is certainly outstanding news, and I'm very happy, Councilman Catch and Ms. Riley, really happy for you and for all the seniors in northern county. I think it's excellent that we are take, we're taking a senior center that was on the second floor of a building, and hopefully, it'll be a one-story building. And I bring this up with some parochial thoughts to it, and, and the Pikeville Senior Center is on the second floor of a building. It's on the second floor of the library, and I don't think it's a good practice to have senior centers on the second floor of a building, because it's in, when there's a time to, for emergencies to evacuate, and you can't use the elevators, using the stairways is, stairway is problematic. So as we move forward in Baltimore County and, and capital budgets moving forward, I would urge the administration to consider looking at not having any senior centers in Baltimore County be located on the second floor of a building. It's unsafe, and our, our county is aging, and, and we need to have adequate facilities for our seniors that are on the first floor of a building. But congratulations to, to you, Councilman Catch, to the administration and to Ms. Riley for a job well done for seniors in the northern part of the county.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to page, page sixty-nine, Lawrence Richardson.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chairman Jones, members of the county council. The administration is requesting the approval of a contract with Heart-to-Heart Ambulance Service to provide Baltimore County Medicaid recipients with transportation services to and from non-emergency medically necessary services. The contract is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. The total amount of the contract is twelve million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The services provided will include transportation to medically necessary scheduled medical appointments, additionally, emergency visits and hospital stays that are medically necessary, and interhospital transfers. The funding is a reimbursement from Medicaid services. The contract was competitively bid. There was one respondent, and there is a fifteen percent MBE. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments from the members? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I guess you move on to page seventy-three.
Yes, sir. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Metropolitan Baltimore Incorporated, to provide education and support to family members of Baltimore County residents diagnosed with a mental illness. This is also a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. The total estimated compensation is one hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. The contractor will provide its family-to-family program, a peer-led, non-treatment intervention that provides education and support to family members of Baltimore County residents diagnosed with mental illness. It provides family members and caregivers of individuals with mental illness information about diagnosis and treatment, medication management, symptoms of mental illness, and then current research related to the biology of the brain disorders and strategies to manage crisis and relapse. I'd be happy to take any questions on this contract.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on the member? All right, thank you, Mr. Richardson. It was good seeing you today as well.
Good seeing you too, sir.
Now we'll move on to page seventy-nine. Sonia Alpintero Anton.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the county council. The Department of Libraries, Baltimore County Public Library, is requesting authorization for the expenditure of approximately six hundred, forty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars from our fund balance to fund the unbudgeted additional cost for items associated with the contract with the IAMAW Union. Costs for items in this contract were not included in the FY twenty-three BCPL budget, because we did not have a contract until after the budget process had concluded. The detail related to this estimate can be found on a separate schedule within your packets. It includes funding for additional leave time. It includes funding for additional leave time for our part-time staff and funding that would allow us to implement a new pay scale on January first. This new pay scale, which was a result of a recent compensation and classification study, and was negotiated with the I A, I A M A W Union, is a step forward for B C P L and acknowledges that all library work is important to the community. It merges our part-time and full-time scale staff onto one pay scale. It applies consistent and equitable increments, increments across all steps and grades, and recognizes our longstanding employees through longevity steps and the ability to earn merit increases. It also increases salaries across the board to reflect the market. This authorization will give us the funding needed to support B C P L staff and uphold the terms negotiated with the union in the contract. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I thank you so much for coming on, and we certainly support the library employees. I guess had one question myself. I was privileged to see a document that was a little confusing for me. I read it, and I wasn't sure if, I think when I saw a couple of words that says that it would not be an equitable distribution of the monies, I guess I was a little confused. Can you explain that for me? Will everybody receive the agreed-upon raises? Or some people get it and some people won't because of their time and service and where they are on the pay scale? I couldn't understand.
Well, if county council approves this funding, we would be in a position to be able to honor our contract with the union. And so effective, the pay period beginning January first, twenty twenty-three, all B C P L staff, whether they are in the collective bargaining unit or outside of the collective bargaining unit, will receive a three percent COLA adjustment. And we will be, and then we will also implement the new pay scale.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Any, I know, I think we have some speakers, but any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Batoka?
Thank you. Ms. Alcantara Antoine, question, is the library industry, is it in a similar situation as our police? Or, you know, in terms of recruitment of staff that want to be librarians? Is it similar to our shortage of police, our shortage of teachers? Has the great resignation impacted the profession, the librarian profession? Are you short-staffed? Do you have your positions filled? Is it difficult for you to recruit?
I would say we have the opposite situation. Well over half of our employees at B C P L are what we consider longstanding, and they've been here ten years or more. And typically, when we have recruitments, we have many people who are trying to get those jobs here at B C P L. We are, I feel like we are well-respected here in the state amongst public libraries, and people want to work for B C P L. And then when they get a job at B C P L, they typically stay at B C P L. And over the past year, we've had many, many successes. If I, am I getting the number correctly? Correctly, I think we had about eighty internal promotions here at B C P L. So people, people love working for B C P L, and they want to stay working at B C P L.
Well, that's encouraging to hear. Thank you for sharing that. If we could bottle that up and share it with the police department and our B C P S so that we can increase the number of police officers, increase the number of teachers, we'd really be moving in the right direction. Thank you, Ms. Alcantara Antoine.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Batoka, I was thinking the same thing. Maybe she should put on the plaids. But anyway, we certainly appreciate everything you're doing and certainly appreciate everything employees of the library are doing, and we want nothing but the best to them. I was on the sidebar, I heard a thing on National Public Radio today, that sort of, I think it was National Public Radio, that sort of made me a little, you know, to be quite frank, I think they were talking about some of the things that had gone down down in Louisiana, where we actually had people that have taken over the library boards and decided that they're going to censor what's in libraries and what you can have and can't have. And, I mean, I just think that, you know, in America, I would think that we were so far beyond that. But obviously, there's pockets of America where we are not beyond that. So, there's no comment necessary. I figure I just put that out there. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just want to comment on our library system. You all know I was in the state legislature, and there's something that I, I hope you all know that our library system is considered one of the best in the United States, not just Maryland, but the United States, and that the use by Baltimore Countyans of our library system is among the very highest in the country. And I certainly thank the director of the libraries and the employees for all their efforts to help people, to assist people, and provide people with the information they need in our libraries. It's, it, it is a system that is honored throughout our nation. And I just want to thank everybody in the library system so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman.
I would like to even go on there, add on to that. It's almost like many community centers. And we have used the libraries repeatedly, whether the distribution of lunches for children, whether it is distribution of COVID supplies, the latest one was distribution of class, I mean, paper bags, new plastic bags. So we certainly appreciate everything you have been doing. And if anybody have not been to a local library in recent years, I would urge you to go inside and take a look at the terrific program and terrific services that are being provided. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure. And it's not just books anymore, folks, not just books. We're a long ways from that. All right, we will move on. Let's see, where are we now?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We have three speakers on that item. I'm sorry, you did mention that earlier.
Yep, three speakers.
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Yara Sheikh. Ms. Sheikh. Ms. Sheikh, are you there?
Yes, I'm there. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. My name is Yara Sheikh, as some of you know, and I'm the vice president of the B C P L Board of Library Trustees. Today represents an important and exciting step in a journey that started over a year ago. Legislation was submitted to the General Assembly in January of twenty twenty-one that would enable B C P L employees to collectively bargain. The Board of Library Trustees has steadfastly maintained its support for the right of B C P L employees to collectively bargain. The Board of Library Trustees worked closely with the newly hired library director, for which we're so proud, to ensure that a fair and workable bill was passed by the General Assembly so that B C P L staff could exercise their right to collectively bargain. On December thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers Union was elected as the collective bargaining representative for B C P L staff. Contract negotiations commenced in January of twenty twenty-two, one year after the bill was introduced in the General Assembly. B C P L has negotiated an M O U with the I A M A W Union in good faith. It recognizes the hard work and dedication of B C P L employees, granting higher wages for all, and increased leave time for part-time employees. The Board of Library Trustees convened a special meeting to accept the contract within days after a group of staff voted to ratify the contract. After review and approval by the county executive and his team, the county council now has the opportunity to authorize funding for the M O U agreement between B C P L and the I M A A W Union. I urge the council to authorize funding. This is B C P L's only experience with the union and the first time negotiating a collective bargaining contract. This process has been a learning curve for all of us, but the Board of Trustees and library administration have consistently prioritized staff while moving through the process outlined in the enabling legislation. The mission of B C P L is to provide opportunities to explore, learn, create, and connect. That work cannot happen without B C P L staff, whose passion and commitment are the lifeblood of our organization. The Board of Library Trustees looks forward to a collaborative working relationship with the I A M A W Union. Thank you for your support of B C P L over the years and its employees, and we ask that you continue as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Yara. We certainly appreciate your support and your advocacy on, with the libraries, as well as so many other things you do for our community. And we thank you for it. Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Moving to the next speaker. Go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yara, if, if your community has a concern or, or a goal that you'd like to reach, of course, she lives in my district, so my district comes first, but she's the person to go to. She has been such a great advocate for our school system and for our libraries, and she's worked so hard in other areas such as feeding people in Baltimore County during the COVID crisis. So, Yara, thank you so much for all you do. And of course, she was very instrumental with Delaney High School, get, moving forward with that project. So I can't thank her enough for all that she does for the community. Thank you, Yara.
You, Councilman Catch. And I encourage everyone to visit, visit their local library. They're fantastic. Thank you.
And Cockeysville is number one in the county, by the way.
Absolutely. Matt, okay.
Did you all know that? Did you all know that? We're number one?
Yes.
Yes.
The busiest, but they are all equally wonderful.
No, we're number one.
Councilman Marks.
I want to, I just want to echo all the comments that have been made. One of the things that I am proudest of having worked on was the construction of the Perry Hall Library, which took ten years, and it's a beautiful facility. And I certainly agree with Councilman Catch's praise of Yara, who has been an outstanding bipartisan community leader.
Okay, fantastic. Next speaker, Ms. Valcassino.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Natalie Eddington. Ms. Eddington, you're our panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you. And good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. My name is Natalie Eddington, and I'm an assistant director with the Baltimore County Public Library. From the beginning, B C P L administration has supported the right for employees to collectively bargain, and this was no different when we were negotiating the contract. Although working with the union and negotiating a contract was a new experience, and we navigated this new territory, we learned a lot along the way. I and others on the team negotiated in good faith and worked tirelessly to reach an agreement that was workable for both parties. Negotiations began in January twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, shortly after the I A M A W was elected by the employees to represent the bargaining unit. B C P L administration and I A M A W, along with employees representing the bargaining unit, met regularly through the end of February, both together and separately, to develop and negotiate a contract. In addition to the hours when both parties met, the employees received an equal number of paid hours to work and prepare with I A M A W. When we reached and passed, both parties agreed to pursue mediation in accordance with the enabling legislation. After some delays beyond our control, we worked with a mediator for full, three full days to make further progress on the contract. In mid-April, twenty twenty-two, B C P L and I A M A W reached an agreement, our first contract that you have before you. I'm fortunate to be able to work with an amazing dedicated staff at B C P L. The staff are truly our greatest asset and the main reason why we are able to provide such outstanding services to our customers and our communities. And I appreciate all the compliments that have come through. We are supportive of the staff and want to be sure that they have good benefits and good pay, and this contract supports that. The county executive and his team have reviewed and approved the funding needed to execute the contract. And so on behalf of the administration, library administration, I respectfully request that you vote in support of this resolution to authorize the funds needed to fully activate the contract that we negotiated in good faith with I A M A W. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers, Ms. Valcassino?
Yes, Mr. Chair. One more speaker for this item. Maureen David. Ms. David. Ms. David, you are our panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. It's so nice to hear all the kind words from the, from the council and from my colleagues on the board, and also from our wonderful staff. So, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. My name is Maureen Walsh-David, and I have the honor to be the current president of the Baltimore County Public Library Board of Trustees. I'm not going to go through the whole history of this. I just want you to know that I'm urging you to support this funding. This is a really important part of our journey. We are now able, with this funding, we would now be able to fully implement the contract that we have negotiated with the union. As you know, our mission is to provide opportunities to explore, learn, create, and connect. And that work can't happen without the passion and commitment of our staff, who are the lifeblood of this organization. So I won't, I won't add anything on to what others have said, but I do want to tell you that we very much appreciate our staff. We have all worked really hard from the time that this legislation was first introduced. The board has consistently acted quickly to do its part to make sure that everything was approved as quickly as possible, and we really appreciate all your time and support on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional questions or comments from the members? I believe that'll do it. And I believe it is now to move on to item number eleven, page twenty-five, Steve Lafferty. Has three contracts to say. It unmuted, my apologies. Do you want to start with contract number, fiscal matter number three, Mr. Chairman? Yes, page twenty-five, number three. Thank you, sir. The administration is requesting approval from the county council. First of all, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract, actually a purchase and sale agreement, to purchase and improve property of two hundred and two thousand square feet building, sited on approximately eighteen acres, for ten million dollars in order to support the future redevelopment of the entire Security Square Mall property. This sale is from T F Baltimore M D, which is the current owners of the C here's property, located at sixty-nine oh one Security Boulevard in Woodlawn. The county's purchase of this property is, as I said, for ten million dollars. It is currently a vacant building and has been vacant for a number of years. This is approximately twenty percent of the site that is occupied by, that's owned by the entirety of the security mall ownership. There are actually five different major owners of the site, which is over ninety acres. The owners of T F Baltimore have tried to sell the property over a number of years and actually had previous agreements for sale that fell through. And at the time that we began negotiations, they were actively looking for a long-term lease agreement for the property. This site, as indicated, is occupied and controlled by five different owners who have not always been in cooperation. So the county's efforts to date have really been to try to get all of the property owners to work collaboratively and upgrade the entirety of this entire property. Over the years, it's gone into greater decline. Unfortunately, some of the major tenants that had first occupied this large property were very successful, and boy, the community. In recent years, however, as the vacancies occurred, it has become not only rundown physically, but less of an asset to the community than the county wishes to see or any of the community members have desired. And we've heard continually from We've heard continually from community members about the importance of this site and the need to take a harder look at how we can actually move towards renovating, repurposing, or redeveloping it in its entirety. The county really, the county administration can no longer really tolerate the negative impact it has had on Woodlawn area and has tried to get the owners to cooperate over a period of years. Shortly after County Executive Oshewski took office, he met with the major owners to work towards a greater collaborative work effort that could see a real repositioning of this property. However, that was not successful. And as it became clear that the owner under the current BMCT zoning is able to bring in used car dealerships or other perhaps less desirable uses, it became important to find a way to be a better partner and participant in the long-term well-being of this site. The county executives made it clear to not only the residents, but to the owners, that he's serious about seeing the area and Woodlawn community enhanced and finding different strategies to do this. One of the strategies is the acquisition of this property. And by acquiring 20% of the entirety of the Security Mall area, we then become an active partner in repositioning it for a better use for the county and for the community itself. We entered into negotiations with T F Baltimore, knowing fully well that if we didn't move expeditiously, that they could, in fact, lease it for a long-term basis to a use that was not going to be compatible with the desires of the community. Last fall, the Planning Department convened a meeting of community members, really with the focus of the master plan, but also concentrated on the mall and what should or could happen with that site. The Randall Stand and the A C P has also issued a report recommending a number of different ways this property could be enhanced and also become a bigger asset for this part of the county. We've heard complaints from the community repeatedly about the lack of better retail, of better opportunities, entertainment. And in fact, the county is also engaged in a process which we call a charrette, which will start in the middle of October, in which we expect to engage the community in looking at this overall site. We have gotten an appraisal, which we just completed recently, and the property has been evaluated at $9.4 million. This was not out of line with what we expected, since we had done some preliminary work, actually starting earlier this year, working with Dude and also in planning and with real estate compliance, able to identify really a range in which we thought this property could be sold or purchased for. We are proposing to pay $10 million instead of the 9.4 that's appraised, because we see a long-term play for the county really in providing an opportunity that otherwise would not be there. If we, long-term benefits and the investment that's going to be warranted by not only the county, but other owners on the property, we believe that we can not only help control the destiny of the site, but also to be successful partners with those who own the mall and own other sections of this large parcel. And so we are actually able to leverage their investments. We've had conversations with the company that owns the interior mall. They're extremely excited by the potential of the county being a partner and helping to reposition the entire site. We've talked with people at Security Ward LLC, who likewise are looking to reposition their site, and as well as with Set the Captives Free, that own the O Center, that owns another large parcel that would be a companion in our overall thinking about how we can reposition and really redevelop this major parcel over in the Woodlawn community. So we do believe that the negotiated price of $10 million is a fair and reasonable one, considering what we expect the benefits to be for the Woodlawn community. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we request approval of the contract that is before the council in order to support the future redevelopment of this facility.
Thank you, Director Lafferty, and let me just say that I know, you know, I neighbor the district, and I've worked a tremendous long time with Councilman Quirk, Speaker Jones, as well as the county executive on trying to make some things happen at that site. And I know all too well of what it takes, because I went through this before with Owens Mills Mall. That said, do you mind? We received one appraisal?
Yes, sir.
So I know in some cases, we normally do maybe two appraisals or three even, but in this case, we did one. Do you mind sharing that with me and Councilman Quirk? We would like to take a look at that before the vote.
Yes, sir. Happy to send it to both of you.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, Steve or Director Lafferty. I represented this area for some time, and I was wondering, what, does the county have any idea of what it is that the county thinks would be helpful to that area? At the Hunt Valley Town Center, the Sears property, of course, was purchased by the owner of the rest of the property, and there's an assisted living home is going up there, apartments, retail, et cetera. I was just wondering if the county has any ideas, or are you waiting to hear from the community first?
Well, thank you for that question, Councilman. We, I think, are basically following the community, and I think we are in sync in large regards. The opportunity to enhance the retail, to bring in residential, create public space, because that community, that area, doesn't have any public space. There's been a lot of interest in possibly some recreation. 18 acres could provide a big open area for the community to gather around residential. There's been some interest as well in perhaps entertainment. So I think we're open, and that's what the charrette really is going to help us serve. We're not wedded entirely to the outcome of the charrette. We're using it as a guide. But we know that the community's engagement is going to be critical for us to help sort of formulate what proposal or plan we may have. The county doesn't build housing. You know, we partner with third parties to do this. And so as we get closer to that outcome, I expect that we'll be talking to many in the private sector about how we can really develop something that's pretty important and valuable to that area.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing the end product, and it sounds exciting. It really does.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lafferty, if you would be kind enough, as you begin the charrette process in October, to include the Second District Council Office and the communities in the Second District. With the redistricting, the western boundary of the Second District is along Windsor Mill Road and then on Dogwood Road. So certainly those communities and communities in Lockarn and Deerfield and other areas, the Woodmore Community, certainly are impacted by, while Security Mall is not physically in the Second District, certainly the communities are impacted by what happens there. And, you know, we want a great outcome, as my colleagues on the council want, but also would like to be included in the discussion and the charrette and design process and whatever comes to be from the planning process.
Yep, certainly we'll include you, and when we had our meeting regarding the mall back in the fall, people from throughout the area, I think we had maybe 100 people actually attended our WebEx discussion, and they were people from throughout the corridor and Woodlawn, but also, you know, further down Liberty Road and north on Liberty Road. So, and people from the Catonsville area. So it really can have a regional impact, which is going to be important to really keep an eye on, which is why we're so fortunate to have the design, charrette design team that we have. And certainly we'll make sure you're included. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments, Councilman Marks?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Lafferty, I'm just going to ask a question that my constituents have posed to me. White Marsh Mall is about a decade younger than Security Square Mall. I know both malls are different, but is there interest in also looking at the long-term future of that town center as well?
Well, it may get a little bit ahead of myself, but saying that in the master plan that we are still working on at this stage, we are looking at areas for potential retro, we're calling it, at least at this stage, retrofit, and certainly the White Marsh Mall Town Center area fits into that matrix. So we're not at that state.
Looks like you're frozen, Director Lafferty. I, I know, Councilman Marks, I know that it's my understanding that that's been the sale. I'm not sure all the details of the Sears Building Act, White Marsh. I'm not sure all the details, but I know that property was just purchased recently.
That is correct, and again, I know it's apples and oranges, and Security Square Mall is older than White Marsh Mall. I just say that because it's, I think it's time to have a, maybe a vision for what that town center is going to look like in the future. And this seemed like an appropriate time to introduce that. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I guess we'll give Director Lafferty a couple of minutes. I know he had some other items as well. So we can probably wait. We'll pick up where we left off. And, oh, there is, he's back. You're muted, Director Lafferty. You're muted. Any additional questions or comments about the sale of 6901 Security Square Boulevard? Having none, Director Lafferty, I guess you can move on to page 28, contract of sale, Penny Folly Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The administration is requesting approval to acquire a perpetual conservation easement on approximately 20.04 acres of land under the county's rural legacy program in the Piney Run Rural Legacy Area. The amount of the contract is $80,000, and it would be paid to the current owner, Penny Folly Miller, located at 15224 Dover Road in Reisterstown. The county matches rural conservation easement funding and increases, by matching it, increases actually the chance that we get rural legacy funds from the state for funding in the future. This has been negotiated with the owner, and in doing so, they give up development rights that they currently have on the site. The valuation is actually calculated based on a formula and came to $4,529 per acre, which actually would be about $10,000 more than what the owner, Ms. Miller, is willing to accept. So this purchase would allow us then to add more acres into our rural, into our land preservation program under our current county program and request approval of this acquisition.
Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, move on to page 32, contract of sale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The administration is requesting approval to acquire perpetual conservation easement on approximately 135.3 acres of land under the county's rural legacy program, also in the Piney Run Rural Legacy Area. This acquisition would be Carmel View Farm, located on Pretty Boy Dam Road, for $730,868. As indicated, the matching of the funds with rural also enhances our opportunity to get money from the state rural legacy program following the formula that's utilized to evaluate the value of the property. The value of this property is $5,400 per acre in accordance with the county code. And as indicated previously, it's a formula that takes into account a number of factors, including the importance and relevance of the preservation, contribution to agricultural industry, soil productivity, and development pressures, and request approval of this acquisition.
Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Director Lafferty. And now we'll move on to Evil Lafferty, page 84.
Always a pleasure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for inviting me back.
If you weren't on at all.
A full plate today. Mr. Chairman, the administration requests approval of Resolution 34-22, which would approve 12 applications for the sale of development right easements on agricultural properties totaling a total of 838 acres under the state's Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation Program. This is for the FY 2023 easement cycle. Under the code, they establish a maximum purchase price for the foundation easements at 75% of the fair market value. And if this resolution is approved, the foundation may extend offers to purchase the easements in order of the ranking and the landowner's easement offer price. In accordance with state law, the rankings are to remain confidential until the actual acquisition takes place. Rankings have been developed through planning staff in the state's, excuse me, the counties, the agricultural board. And what you have before you is a list of those potential owners, not the actual ranking. And you can see that they come from Council Districts 3 as well as from Council District 6. So would request approval of Resolution 34-22, so we can forward this to the state mouth program for them then to make offers on the acquisition of additional properties.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, very quickly, Steve. We, as a county, we have a goal of 80,000 acres, and in the fiscal note, it refers to that we are now going to be at 72,000 acres. So we're getting very close to the goal of 80,000. And I just want to thank the administration and their commitment to this program, which is very vital to our county. And these new purchases, are they included in the 72,000 acres? Or are the new purchases, would they add on another 1,000 acres or what?
Yes, that would be in addition to the land that's already been preserved.
So we're talking about 73,000 acres. That's fantastic. Thank you.
And thank you for your compliment, Councilman. I want to really compliment the staff, Megan Benjamin, Joe Wiley, and David Birkenthall for their very hard work on land preservation efforts.
Thank you very much. Move right along to page 91.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The administration is requesting approval of Resolution 35-22, which would approve four applications ranked in priority order for the sale of agricultural land preservation easements. This will be pursuant to the county's FY 22 agricultural land preservation program. The analysis demonstrates the benefits per acre and cost per acre and uses a land evaluation site assessment system, which looks at multiple components necessary to evaluate the quality of the property that would be brought into the program. The four that are before you today are found in Council Districts 3, 4, and 6. And it's also to be noted that there are some duplicates from the other list that's just presented to you, because they qualify for both of these programs. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I request approval of the resolution.
Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much. We'll now move on to...
Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Director Lafferty. We'll now move on to page twelve. Ms. Beavens is, cannot join us today. So, I will ask our secretary, Mr. Boswick, to just give a brief explanation of the bill in place of Councilwoman Beavens, and then we'll get to the, any questions or comments, then we move on with the callers who have signed up, the speakers who have signed up to speak.
Thank you. Let me just make sure you can hear me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the bill is intended to, to help waterfront businesses, the marinas and the restaurants, to be able to provide certain amenities to their, to their customers within the, the buffer area. Mrs. Beavens has been contemplating this bill for a little while. She introduced it on August first. She's, I think, met several times with the administration, and I think she's still in the process of doing that. The bill would exempt these marinas and, and restaurants with a liquor license from certain buffer requirements. And we're, she is still, I think, in the process of, of deciding, you know, next steps for the bill.
Okay, and thank you very much, Mr. Boswick. And for those that may be listening, willing to speak, this is Bill fifty-seven dash twenty-two. And I will go ahead, if there's any questions, comments from the members. If not, we'll move on with the speakers. And I'll just, I'll just make one comment, one comment that I think is very worth saying. Well, maybe I won't say it. I have tremendous respect for our Attorney General. And if our Attorney General so chooses to make a comment about any legislation we're doing, I would urge him to let us know the proper way, as opposed to hearsay, when I hear people sending emails about what the Attorney General said. If he has something to say to the county council, we're, we're, we're all ears, and there's a way and a place to do that in a proper order. And on that note, we'll go ahead with, Councilman Katz, you have something to add?
No.
No.
Well, I did, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, do you know if any other county is taking this kind of action? Are we the leaders on this?
Well, it's, it's not an easy thing to answer, Mr. Patoka, and the main reason is because the, the one thing I wanted to add, so I'm glad you asked that, is the, the analysis, the legal one, is not that complicated. You know, there, there's a critical area commission, there are critical area laws and, and COMAR regulations about what you can and can't do near the water. There are buffers, there are modified buffers, there are hi- higher and lower density areas in those buffers and outside the buffers. There are, when, when you seek to do things, and, and Mr. Lichten obviously knows this stuff a lot better than I do, as a, as a daily thing, but I can say, you know, when you go within some of these buffer areas, you've got to provide mitigation, and sometimes that's payment of a fee, or doing plantings to offset what you are asking to do in the buffer, things like that. And so, that, that's not very difficult to grasp. The, the difficulty is there are certain jurisdictions that some laypeople and even the professionals, I think, would say, well, they've got it easier than we've got it. You know, I, I go to Secrets in Ocean City, and I see nothing but beach and tables in the water, and, and it's like, you know, it's like the barn doors out. And I go to areas in Hartford County, and I go to areas in, in some other waterfront eastern shore areas, and it seems like you can do just about whatever you want. And, and I'm not saying that that's the case, but that's sort of the perception at, I think, at times. And so, and then there will even be times in Baltimore County itself where it seems like people can do things that other people can't. Now, again, it's complicated, because sometimes i- if you've been doing something before the critical areas regulations kicked in, you're grandfathered in. So, what one might be able to do, they may be able to do perfectly legally, because they were doing it before the regulations took effect, kind of like a non-conforming use i- in the zoning world. So, so the answer to your question is, 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 is not exact, I don't think we would be a pioneer in things with, but perhaps the way this bill is specifically worded at the moment, as introduced, it does need some work, and we would be, you know, kind of stretching the, stretching, stretching things a little bit.
Okay, thank you. I don't think the Attorney General randomly selected this project to, or, or this bill as one that he would opine on, but I think that Delegate Dana Stein, who has been, you know, clearly an environmental champion for, for much of his career, had constituents bring this issue to him. And I think Delegate Stein raised the question with the Attorney General. I think that's how the Attorney General became involved in this particular bill before our council.
Well, thank you so much, Councilman Patoka, and I have nothing but the utmost respect for Delegate Stein and his work, and his body of work, as well as the Attorney General. And I, I only said that, and I probably should not have, I only said that because it, you know, we received these emails from people telling us what the Attorney General said. Well, again, if the Attorney General wants to weigh in on something we're doing, we would urge him to send the proper information to us, so that we can evaluate it and accept it, as opposed to coming from third and fourth and fifth name. I don't think that's very effective, and I don't think it's fair to the Attorney General. And I probably should not have said it, but I, I have respect for all of the people involved, and that's why I did say it. On that note...
Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you. I, I am a member of the Critical Areas Commission. I was appointed by Governor Hogan in two thousand and fourteen, and it's been a tremendous honor. I've enjoyed serving on that commission. Generally speaking, the, the buffer is about a hu- is a hundred feet. And you're right, I mean, the commission is a statewide panel that reviews a lot of these proposals. You know, so I understand the sensitivity of, of those requirements, and I think everyone in the council wants to be protective of the shoreline. You do hear complaints from some of the businesses in the Middle River area, that they can't get, for example, approval to erect a cabana on a cement bulkhead, right? It's not vegetative, it's a cement bulkhead. I think there's some frustration, and I'm always one to think we can work things through. So, hopefully, these, these conversations will continue, because they are very, very well needed in balancing that environmental sensitivity with the, the interests of, of those business owners. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
And I, and I thank you, Councilman Marks. And I know that Councilwoman Beavens put a lot of work into it, and I know that she has not done, she's continuing to work on it. And I'm sorry she's not here today, but, um, you know, we look forward to hearing from her soon, and wish her well. Any additional questions or comments before we go to the callers? I know they've been, the speakers have been waiting for some time, so why don't we go right with them? Chris?
Chair, um, our first speaker that had registered was Taylor Smith-Hams. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to locate her either by phone number or name on our attendee list, so I'm going to go to our next speaker who registered, who is Lindsay Crone. Give me one moment. Ms. Crone, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay, and I live in Middle River. The proposed changes in Bill number fifty-seven dash two-two are yet another example of the death-by-a-thousand-cuts approach to eroding the health of our bay. And it comes just one week after stormwater runoff drove so much sediment into the Gunpowder River that it still hasn't recovered, killing all commercial and recreational crabbing activity in the area, and raising bacteria levels one thousand times above normal and ten times above safe levels. This should be a wake-up call to all county and state, state government officials that current mitigation policies are failing the bay and the people who depend on it for their recreation and livelihood. These policies are based on one-hundred-year rain events that are now, we're now experiencing every few years, if not yearly. But instead, our county council is looking for ways to strip yet another layer of protection from our bay. And for what? To fill the pockets of a few restaurant owners under the guise of adding a handful of seasonal waitstaff jobs? You talk about these businesses being drivers of our local economy. They pale in comparison to the lost tourism, an economic impact of a bay that is no longer safe to swim, crab, or fish in. And that's not some hypothetical doomsday scenario. It's something we saw play out in real time just last week. Please vote no on these proposed changes, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Crone, for your avidness on this important issue. And next speaker, Mr. Melkaster.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Nora Miller-Smith. Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith, you are on as a panelist.
Hello. My name is Nora Miller-Smith. I've been a Baltimore County resident for forty years, and I'm speaking in opposition to Baltimore County Bill fifty-seven twenty-two, which would exempt certain Baltimore County businesses from complying with environmental regulations that have protected the Chesapeake Bay for decades. After the nineteen eighty-two EPA study indicating that the bay was in dramatic decline in water quality and productivity because of excessive runoff and toxic pollutants, then Maryland Governor Hughes sponsored a bipartisan governor's conference with Governor Thornburg of Pennsylvania, Governor Rob of Virginia, and Mayor Barry of Washington DC to work together to improve the health of the bay. In nineteen eighty-four, the Maryland General Assembly passed the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Law, and one of the law's provisions was the establishment of a critical area buffer of at least a hundred feet directly next to the bay's tributary streams and tidal waters that could not be developed. This protective buffer, composed of trees and other vegetation, would mitigate runoff from roads, buildings, and other impervious surfaces by acting like a sponge and absorbing sediment, excess nutrients, and other pollutants that would otherwise flow directly into the bay. But proposed Bill fifty-seven twenty-two would now accept the, exempt the owners of marinas and full-service waterfront restaurants with alcohol licenses from having to comply with that critical buffer. Per the bill, the uses and structures at such a facility shall be permitted up to the edge of the water with no mitigation or buffer yard requirements. And again, the commission would have to exempt all businesses from these previous regulations. Baltimore County should not unilaterally change this law that has protected and improved the bay for decades. It would establish a dangerous precedent. If the council passes this law, what would prevent other counties in Maryland from deciding they wanted their own exemptions? And why does Baltimore County not have to obey Maryland state law? Why should the county council undermine this law, which has helped to protect the bay for all of us, just for the financial benefit of a few businesses? And where's the scientific assessment of what effect the change in this law would have on the health of the bay? If there has been an environmental impact study, can the public see it? I believe this bill puts our bay in too much risk. We've made too much progress over the past thirty years to go backwards, and for that reason, I'm in opposition to the bill, and urge you to vote against it. Thank you very much.
Ms. Miller-Smith, thank you so much for your testimony and again, your advocacy. Give me one second. Give me one second. Thank you so much for your advocacy on this important issue as well, and we'll move on to the next speaker. I'm getting some information from some sources. As soon as I validate it, I will let everybody know. But meanwhile, we'll hear from the next speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Ann George. Ms. George, you are now a panelist. You may begin your testimony. Ms. George? I'm not sure what's going on, Mr. Chair. She is a panelist, but, um... She isn't responding.
Okay, was she the last caller?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair. We have one other speaker. I can return her to the, uh, pa-, uh, excuse me, the attendee list.
Leave her on, and George is on now. Go get the next person. Is Ms. George here now?
She's on as a panelist, but I've tried speaking. She, she's not replying to us, so...
Okay, leave her on there for now. Go on to the next caller, and, and then we'll give her another chance.
Okay. Our next registered speaker is Mr. Brian Hall. Mr. Hall, you're, you may begin your testimony. Mr. Hall?
It looks like he's muted too, Chris. If there's a way to unmute him. There, there we go.
Here we go. See if you can see me. I'm, here I am. Okay, I'm, I'm here now. Hello, everybody. My name is Brian Hall. I own Old Bay Marina in Edgemere. I support Bill fifty-seven twenty-two, because as a water-dependent marina owner, my industry in Baltimore County has been impacted and stagnant since Baltimore County, under our first Baltimore County Environmental Secretary, Robert Cheesley, expanded... Upon the Maryland Critical Area Commission's intent, or the desired by the public. The unintentional result of this oversellous interpretation of the critical area buffer puts the burden on a small, a small number of recreational and hospitality businesses, severely limiting their ability to the public. The, the engineering and other soft costs imposed... ...buffer, always without any results, have left the waterfront businesses close to financial ruin, while depriving our citizens' access to facilities in a changing waterfront mark. Unless you are in the marine trade, the best-kept secret is that the boating industry is dying, is dying as fast as the boomers, I'm included in that, who once made Baltimore County's waterfront a major recreational boating destination. Many in our younger generation do not have the, the, the time, the will, or the money, or the money to put into boating, but want to enjoy Baltimore County's water side. The marina industry must have the tools to be flexible and think within the expanded buffer box to reinvent itself, or the public will lose access to the waterfront as our small mile-and-paw marinas and boatyards sell out to the condo crowd. The one hundred, this is for our environmentalists who, all four that spoke earlier, the one hundred-foot buffer imposed on our businesses is not ruining the Batavisco River. Look at the trees cut down in Howard County to accommodate the DC bedroom... Look at the trees cut down in Howard County to accommodate the DC bedroom communities. People I know have died in a leakage from flash flooding, who has died as the result of marina or waterfront locating in or near Baltimore County's 100-foot buffer. In the real world, this bill would only affect a small length... This is very important. A small length of Baltimore County's 232-mile shoreline. And the benefits to the public offer is passage. Again, I'm an environmentalist, but my concern is a very strong health debate. But the waterfront, our industry's changing. I'm in the sailboat business. Most of my sailboats are 40 years old or so. My customers are 70, 80. We need to think out of the box how we can continue. Again, that 100-foot buffer on this small amount of water-dependent facilities is not going to destroy the Chesapeake Bay. We will do it in a responsible manner. But back to the environmentalists, let's go to the Batavsko wastewater treatment plant, where they're taking tanker trucks from out of state and injecting our sewage with chemicals that now we're bringing down the trade.
I'm sorry, you're over your three minutes. If you could just...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But thank you, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for your participation in this conversation.
Thank you, thank you.
I will, yes, go ahead and read a statement that was delivered to me by a number of sources. I apologize, I was unaware of this. I had some idea, but again, just like, just like what I said about hearsay and secondhand, I need to get it directly from people so that I can be clear and not make errors. This is a statement from Councilwoman Bevins. "After lengthy consideration and listening to concerns from constituents and environmental groups across the county and state, I have decided to withdraw Bill 57-22. The intent of this legislation was never to allow sprawling development in our Chesapeake Bay for the protectors, but rather to make some tweaks to allow for businesses to enhance their atmosphere through the addition of palm trees, picnic tables, and other minor amenities. However, it has become increasingly clear over the last week that withdrawing this legislation is the right thing to do. Since the bill was introduced, I have met with the county executive staff and the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability. In those discussions, it has become clear to me that there is a path forward, but that Bill 57-22 may have been a step too aggressive. With that said, I am glad that this discussion we had, and I hope that the Baltimore County Government and local waterfront businesses owners can keep this conversation going and come up with a solution that helps our businesses while protecting the county's most precious natural resources. Signed, Councilwoman Bevins, District 6." So, thank you very much for that. And we look forward, and we know that Councilwoman Bevins will continue to say this on this issue. On that note, we're going to move ahead. And we will move on to, let's see, where are we going now? So that I don't mess up. We're going to go to Ms. Rhoda Benjamin, page 83. Ms. Benjamin?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Council President and Council members. The Office of Human Resources is requesting for approval for an increase for the county executive. In partnership with the PSAB, we are requesting that the county executive's salary be increased from 175 to 192, beginning December 2022, as provided in Section 402A of the county charter.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the members? I know we have a few speakers. And on that note, we'll just go on to the speaker.
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, Ms. Benjamin, can you... It appears to be 10% increases for the executive and for the council. Where is the 10%? What is the justification for that percentage?
So, we benchmark with surrounding counties and cities. And because this increase has not occurred or happened in about, since 2017, we felt, based on the benchmarking data that we had, that 10%, close to 10%, not appropriate, not 10% is actually eight, close to 9% was appropriate currently to update the salary ranges based on PSAB recommendation.
I think if you look at the increases in inflation, you said a six-year period. I think if you were to add them together, it would be greater than 9%. You know, as I said, I don't know exactly what justification, but it would be greater than 9%.
It's hit me, Kent, if you don't mind. I'll just say that I believe, and this Benjamin is correct and I'm wrong, I believe that this was also what employees received in terms of increases in their compensation since 2017. So, this is the same base that employees receive. They just received it sooner than we. Any additional questions or comments from anyone?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, I was just curious on council members, how the Baltimore County Council compares to council members in other large jurisdictions that are nearly, you know, that are 800,000 to a million residents.
Well... I'm not sure if Ms. Benjamin will want to get into that now. I certainly have that information in front of me. And we can discuss it when we get to, I guess, when we get to... Soon, it'll be our turn where I will defend what we are suggesting.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Let's put this to bed. Ms. Rogers? You're muted, ma'am.
I apologize. I'd also say that per our requirement to develop and present a compensation plan to the county, this is something we found out earlier this summer, and we are indeed working on with Mr. Boswick's input as well. All council members and council staff have to be included in that package. So, we are doing a small benchmarking project that will do just that as well. Councilmember Pocock, there's something that we're formally doing as a part of our requirement to send a recommended compensation package to you, which entails elected officials as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Sure. We have a couple of speakers. If there's no more questions, while we go with the speakers, Ms. Bellcaster?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we only have one speaker for this item, and it's David Clymeyer. Mr. Clymeyer, you may begin your testimony. You're on as a panelist.
Yes. Good afternoon, members of the council. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Ms. Rogers foreshadowed my statement. I'm going to testify in opposition to Bill 5522. Specifically, I ask the council to delay its consideration of the bill.
Clymeyer, we can't hear you. Something happened?
He's not muted, Mr. Chair. Oh, now he is. Wait a minute. Are you there, Mr. Clymeyer? I'm not sure what happened, Mr. Chair. He is on, and he is unmuted.
Okay, he's the last speaker on this issue. We will certainly, if Clymeyer can come back on, we will certainly allow him to finish his time. Doesn't look like we're going anywhere anytime soon. On this note, why don't we move forward? Let me see.
I think next is the resolution related to Ms. Benjamin's testimony, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Ms. Benjamin? I thought that's where we were, Resolution 33-22.
Right.
Okay, we have another, we have another, I guess, Purchase Order PRM Consulting, Inc. Is that...
Okay, let me see, let me see.
We were going to get to that after the two salary bills, I think.
Well, okay. I know... Wait a minute. No, the county administrative officer, next. We've done the county executive. We'll move on to page 83, Resolution 33-22, for the county administrative officer compensation.
Same as, yeah. Oh, sorry. My apologies.
Go right ahead.
Same as for the county executive. Again, in partnership with the PSAB, we requested an increase of the county administrative officers' salary to increase to, my apologies here, 262... 262,000 in partnership with classification and compensation study and in alignment with surrounding counties and cities.
Well, Ms. Benjamin, can you be so kind for people listening to explain what the PSA... Who the PSAB is or what it is?
So, the PSAB is the Personal Advisory Board. They oversee actions taking place in the Office of Human Resources and/or the county, and they provide guidance as to salary increases, classification, and compensation study. They also hear grievances and resolutions to any arbitration cases that comes through the Office of Human Resources.
Okay, thank you so very, very much. And we'll go back to Mr. Clymeyer to give him to finish his statement, and then we will move forward.
Mr. Clymeyer, we can see you, but we can't hear you. And you're unmuted. Is your mic working on your computer?
Morning, but...
We can hear you, we can hear you.
Is that right? Magic, can you hear me? My still... All right, well, thank you very much.
We just lost you again.
Clymeyer, if we see you, we can hear. Okay, Clymeyer, if you get your audio, we'll let you finish. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Clymeyer, let me see, can we unmute them? Chris?
He's unmuted, Mr. Chair. I don't think the problem is on our end. It sounds like it's something with his computer, because we heard him for a few moments, and then it went out. I don't know if, like, maybe his mic on his computer isn't working properly. As an alternate, Mr. Clymeyer, you can call in by phone and just leave your camera on, and we'll mute you. And then we'll be able to see you and hear you, if you want to try doing that.
Well, we hear you.
Now we hear you.
All right, I'm going to continue to talk.
Okay.
Somebody signal me when I cut out. I'll cut down the... I've already eaten into my three minutes. Nobody listening. I'm going to pick up where Ms. Rogers left off.
Is it me, or is it in and out?
Well, his audio's going up and down, but let's just let Mr. Clymeyer finish. And we'll hear what we hear, so we can move forward. We can hear you, Mr. Clymeyer.
I understand... Different move, let's say, 15, 14 years. Since the charter was amended, require that plan. Most of the members of the council here today recall that. In fact, it's been four months since Rogers acknowledged that there was a requirement for that plan, acknowledged it because I asked for a copy, didn't get one. Said that that was the first, that the administration was aware of this requirement. Four months later, still no plan. This is not... I just don't believe... Her experience... Not the least of... Are we giving... Compensation... Fired by... ... For this... Hold on. Until the can... Certain techniques of violation, going to detail by the written... Why it mattered, but the crisis to say, long overdue. Terms, which, let's say, it will be determined why and how this violation of charter occurred. I know for a fact, or let's say I believe, two members of the Eschepian District, certainly knew about the charter requirement. One was his current county attorney. One was his former county attorney. Both of them were members of the charter.
Well, thank you, Mr. Clymeyer. We had to, I know myself, I had to enhance my audio quite a bit to hear you, but I did hear you. And it is my understanding that you said it's been four months since you asked for salary compensation plan as required by the county charter, and you haven't received it yet. I do know the administration is making plans to do these things, if they not, haven't already completed them. On that note, we heard what you said. Thank you very much. And now we will move forward. Any questions or comments on Resolution 33-22, compensation for the chief administrative officer? Hearing none, thank you very much. Now, I will move forward with 15. Let's see, let's see, let's see, where are we going now? I believe it is...
I think that's the, it's the purchase order for the consultant, Mr. Chairman, fiscal matter six.
Page forty-three.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Benjamin, you're on.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So OHR in partnership with the administration is interested in conducting a, um, enterprise-wide classification and compensation study for county positions, given their current economic environment. And as we've experienced challenges attract, challenges attracting and retaining qualified, um, employees. Um, we are seeking partnership with PRM, our vendor, to do a classification and compensation study to assist with over eight hundred, eight hundred distinct positions and classification with classifications with fourteen pay schedules for merit and non-merit staff. It has been over twelve years since the county conducted an enterprise-wide classification analysis. As a result, OHR is requesting to collaborate with a subject matter expert and, and a vendor to oversee this project. Implementing a county-wide competitive, um, compensation structure will afford the county the ability to recruit, um, talented, talented candidates and retain current employees. The cost for this project is, um, four hundred thousand dollars. And this is a cooperative agreement that we're backing on with Unarundo County and, um, I believe PG Counties. PG County, meaning.
In respect for my colleagues in Prince George's, please call the Prince George's.
Yes, I'm.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Ms. Benjamin. Any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman DeTocca?
So I would ask that that consultant be asked to check in with Sonia Alcántara Antoine. Because apparently she's doing something right over at Baltimore County Public Libraries. Because everyone seems to be in a good place there in terms of compensation and in terms of morale. So that would be the place I would go and find out what she has going on over there. So you could ask the consultant to do that. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilman DeTocca.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Rogers?
Th, this, um, classification and compensation study, uh, indeed includes council staff as well. And as Ms. Benjamin indicated, it's been twelve years, uh, since the county endeavored to review our classifications and our compensation. And it's just very difficult for us to compete. Uh, we often have to post positions two and three times because we lose employees not being able to, um, meet the salary expectations. Uh, people will not come to Baltimore County and take a pay cut to come. And we're really running into that with respect to, uh, technical positions, engineers, all kinds of, um, advanced degree kind of positions. Um, we're just really challenged right now. And many of our colleagues across the, uh, the region have engaged in classification and compensation studies such as this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. Uh, any additional questions or comments? Moving right along, moving right along. Okay, uh, I guess we're moving on to page, to, uh, page seventy-six. Seventy-six, Councilman Marks. Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-two.
You're unmuted, Councilman Marks.
Gotcha. Sorry about that, everyone. Resolution twenty-eight twenty-two advances a planning or development in the Southland Hills community of Western Towson. A bit of background, in two thousand sixteen, the Presbyterian home of Maryland closed. Presbyterian home of Maryland includes the Bosley Mansion and an iconic lawn that was used for Easter egg hunts and other community activities for the Southland Hills neighborhood. Is an incredibly important place in the life and history of the Towson community. Presbyterian home has sat empty for about a half decade. There was an initial planning or development approved for review by the council that never advanced. Now, after much work, we have a proposal that repurposes the property into a state-of-the-art assisted living and memory care facility with one hundred seven beds. The core of the Bosley Mansion is retained, and the developer has proposed keeping the iconic lawn that forms the heart of this property. Today you will hear testimony from the leadership of the Southland Hills Improvement Association, which strongly supports this resolution. As council members, we go to homeowners and community associations first, and this group has had extensive dialogue with the developer. But please don't just listen to the president of the community association. Here are comments from a few of the neighbors who have emailed the council. Quote, "We are in complete support of the current development. Ready to have someone bring new life to the piece of property that is currently in a state of complete decay and a source of vandalism and loitering." Next quote, "My family resides at a corner lot that directly shares a property line with the Presbyterian home of Maryland. Development of the land would impact our home. I will clearly state that my wife and I are in full support of the proposed redevelopment by LCB Senior Living. As we're all aware, the existing structure and property has fallen into disrepair and is frankly creating unsafe circumstances, especially in the form of trespassing. Proposed plan would pay a major benefit to the aging and elderly population in our community. This would have a positive impact for local families for decades to come." And a third email that we've received, quote, "I am in favor of the current plans for a senior living residence. I believe that this development will add functionality and value to the neighborhood while removing a dangerous eyesore. I fear that if we block this proposal, we could open ourselves up to options that will be detrimental to the neighborhood as this property is not going to remain vacant forever," end quote. Um, I have been working on this process since two thousand sixteen, so six years. Uh, I've been through numerous community meetings. I've had countless conversations with neighbors. Um, and I firmly believe that this development proposal reflects substantial dialogue and is probably the best option we are going to see, um, here moving forward. Thank you very much.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman, again?
Yeah, Councilman Marks, just a quick question with the historic part of that property. Uh, what will, uh, happen to it? Is it gonna be part of the assisted living, uh, complex? Or what, will it be restored or what's the situation?
Yeah, so, so the property was nominated to, for landmark preservation status. The, the Landmarks Preservation Commission did not agree with that. So it was never forwarded to the council. Uh, the developers proposed retaining the, the core of the structure, so the main building. So that will happen. And, and I do want to mention, and Mr. Boswick can probably describe these, there, there, uh, is an amendment that I'm gonna propose. Um, that, that I think softens some of the language in, in the resolution. If Mr. Boswick could describe the amendment.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Marks. Uh, the, the resolution initially stated, um, that the county would be prohibited, prohibited from requiring the applicant to widen the paving of Dixie Drive, Florida Road, or Georgia Court. And would also comply with certain additional road requirements. Uh, that language has been softened a bit. Uh, because really it, it's up to the administrative law judge to, to make the decisions on what, if any, improvements, uh, should be made. So the amendment would state that the county council, uh, strongly supports and recommends approval of modifications of standards before the ALJ that would be necessary to limit the public improvements to those improvements that are listed in the resolution related to Florida Road, Dixie Drive, Georgia Court. And, uh, and also, um, green spa, you know, providing lawn and green space.
Okay. Okay, we good, Councilman Marks?
We're all good. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Boswick and Councilman Marks. I know we have some, any questions or comments from the members before we get to at least five or seven speakers. And, uh, when we get to the speakers, I would ask you to, uh, being, you know, we certainly appreciate you, uh, testifying. We certainly want, want to hear, you have to say, of being respectful of everybody's time. If somebody has already said, uh, your comments or, or said the same thing, feel free to say ditto or copy that, and we won't mind at all. Uh, Ms. Bell Castro, take it away.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we actually have seventeen speakers for this item, I believe.
Again, if somebody says what you have to say, feel free to say ditto and, uh, you know, the same, and, and we'll guess move forward from there. Go ahead. I didn't know it was seventeen.
Yes, sir.
I should be looking at the second page.
Seventeen. Um, our first speaker is Patricia Malone. Give me one moment. Ms. Malone, you're on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Okay, can you see me and hear me now?
And, uh, before we get started, to be fair, with seventeen speakers in the hour six-thirty-eight, and we give everybody their time. Ms. Bell, Ms. Bell Castro, I would ask that you be very tight on the time so that we can make sure everybody have their time.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if, if someone reaches their three minutes, I'll, uh, remind them to wrap up their comments. And yes, Ms. Malone, we can see and hear you.
Perfect. I'll, I'll talk as fast as I can. So, um, obviously, I'm here speaking on behalf of the resolution for the residents, uh, Southland Hills. I represent the applicant LCB Senior Living. Ted Doyle, who is the vice president with LCB, is also here and will testify. Um, also, as Councilman Marks mentioned, this proposal is to build a new assisted living facility, basically in a lot that already had an assisted living facility for many, many years. Baltimore County has the second largest population of older adults in Maryland, and they need more assisted living and memory care beds, and this will help fill some of that need. Before pursuing this project, LCB reached out to the community to get input. And the main suggestions they received, as Councilman Marks mentioned, was to maintain as much of the front lawn as possible, to incorporate the facade of the Bosley Mansion, which is the center square portion of the building, into the design of the new facility. And there was also some desire expressed to limit road improvements to help retain the character of the neighborhood. LCB's proposal does a good job of incorporating these requests while still providing the accommodations they need for their senior residents. The lawn will largely be maintained and actually improved because they'll be removing existing impervious for the driveway from that area. LCB has agreed to highlight the facade of the Bosley Mansion and incorporate that into the architectural design. And they're also proposing only minor improvements to the area roads. The building positioning largely dictates, is largely dictated by the existing conditions. The property is surrounded on three sides by public roads. All four sides have existing single-family homes around them. And when you're considering preserving the facade of the mansion and the lawn, the location of the building is fairly restricted by all of those constraints. LCB has tried to balance all of those considerations. And while we recognize there is no perfect positioning of the building, they do believe they have come up with a perfect location, I'm sorry, the best location, not the perfect location for the, for the building. The footprint is only slightly larger than the previous footprint. Councilman Marks has kindly agreed to include language in the resolution. I understand it has been softened to somewhat, to some extent, supporting minimal road improvements and also supporting the use of the front lawn to satisfy the open space requirements. Some have criticized him for, for including this language in the resolution. For those less familiar with PUDs, this type of language is not at all unusual for PUD resolutions. The council is permitted to determine under which conditions it will allow a PUD to go forward. Many resolutions, including one passed in two thousand twenty, included language dictating how a pro, a project would satisfy local open space. And in that one case, it was actually satisfied off-site. Several resolutions, including some passed in two thousand twenty, have included language restricting or dictating how road improvements were to be done. Many resolutions have outlined similar unique, uh, restrictions, and that's the point of a PUD, that it's, it's targeted to a particular property in a particular circumstance. So on behalf of the LCB, I would ask that the council approve the resolution, as Mr. Boswick has described it, being amended, and allow the project to go forward. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, but with so many people.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Uh, next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Okay.
Certainly, Ms., certainly, Mr. Chair, one moment.
And to be fair, the vast majority of these folks are for the project. Uh, I think I only see two people that are against it, and one person is undecided. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Ted Doyle. Mr. Doyle, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Um, we're very pleased to be here tonight, and, uh, thank you so much for your time in hearing, hearing our proposal. Um, LCB is a company with roots that go back about twenty-five years in, in the senior living business. We've built about fifty communities, uh, all up down the eastern seaboard. Um, we specialize in memory care and assisted living as we are proposing right here. Um, all of our, all of our buildings tend to be in communities like Towson, uh, communities with history, with great pride, architectural significance. Um, and we take a lot of pride ourselves in, in really designing buildings that fit within the context and the spirit, um, of the neighborhoods where we are. Um, we'll be serving the local population. Our typical seniors, uh, come from within a five-mile radius of our buildings, or their children live in that radius. Um, we employ, um, members of the community. Um, all of our businesses are, you know, in each of our communities is a business unto itself, uh, are very local businesses. Uh, and, and individually will contribute something in, in, on the order of three million dollars a year in goods and services, purchases and salaries, uh, within the community. One of the things that we place a huge premium on is working collaboratively with our, the towns that we are involved with and also the neighborhoods that we've been involved with. I personally have been involved in this project now for about a year. Um, and in that time of attended holiday celebrations in the neighborhood, and, and we, we've held, we've held two meetings on our own. Um, not only of the, of the legal butters, but a much wider radius to make sure we included what was a more sensible, uh, uh, representation of the local neighborhood. Um, we've also done our, um, the required community input meeting. Um, I've had many, many conversations on the phone with neighbors and other interested parties. I've spoken with the Preservation Alliance. Um, and been out to the site there, as you can imagine, many times, uh, with my colleagues, um, meeting with people and making sure that what we put forward here is something that's in character with the neighborhood. Um, I'll leave it at that because I know you've got a lot of people who want to speak, but we, again, thank you so much for your time tonight. I'm willing to answer any or all questions you might have of us, uh, and we look forward to working with you all collaboratively, collaboratively going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. We appreciate you hanging on, uh, so long to, uh, share your comments with us. We certainly appreciate it. And I know we have seventeen callers, and I know I said, if somebody says something, you can feel free to say, I support what they said. I don't have to repeat it. I say that in the interest of time to be respectful of everybody's time. But make no mistake about it, everyone is welcome to, you're entitled to your three minutes. You stayed on the long, you stayed on the line for a long time. And believe me when I tell you, we are all too happy to stand here and listen to you. I don't want anybody to think I was trying to cut him short. Ms. Bell Castro, next speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is David Edwards. Mr. Edwards, you're on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. As the president of Southland Hills Neighborhood Association, I'm here to represent both the board and our membership. So we have a very active, uh, community. And, uh, we represent, uh, around two hundred and twenty-five households. Our current board is comprised of representative for most every street in the neighborhood. So this proposed, uh, development is the centerpiece of our neighborhood. For those of you that are familiar with our neighborhood, uh, you can identify, uh, with how important this particular plot is. Um, and just be it known that I am the third president of the association that's been dealing with this project, which has gone on for quite a while. Um, so the current plan proposes to preserve a significant portion of the green space, preserves the central mansion structure, and is a use that's familiar to all of us that live in this neighborhood. Um, and it's a familiar asset that's, uh, been familiar for generations of people that have grown up there. Um, additionally, this project brings needed services to the area, and for the first time in a hundred years, this parcel will generate tax revenue for the county. It has always been a nonprofit, uh, in the past. So I, I would like to also simply acknowledge, and we really greatly appreciate all the efforts of Councilman. efforts of Councilman Marks. He's been an invaluable asset and advisor over these many years. He's seen many plans, met with developers, hears the community, and has helped us to navigate to the best possible outcome for the community. I should also especially thank you, Councilman Marks, for your patience and tact in hearing out and handling a couple of our unreasonable and vocal neighbors that don't represent the majority. As mentioned by others, as a neighborhood association, we have a high regard for the developer, LCB Senior Living. They engaged community leadership very early in the process and have incorporated most of the wish items provided by the community and have been fully transparent in the process. It's worth noting that LCB will be both the developer and the long-term operator of the senior living memory care facility, as they are in numerous other facilities in their portfolio. The specific provisions in the resolution related to road widening were inserted at the request of the neighborhood. And you'll hear from other people, and I realize there's a lot of commentary coming your way, but given the current state of the property and its negative impact on the surrounding properties, we are eager to see this development plan move forward and without delay. This project solves real problems for real people, and we ask that the county council approves the PUD resolution in front of you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David.
We certainly appreciate your participation in your comments, and I'm sure Councilman Marks appreciates it as well. Absolutely. Thank you.
Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Jack Spalding. Mr. Spalding, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony. Mr. Spalding.
Thank you. Just trying to see if I could get video working.
There you go.
Thank you to the council for allowing me to address you in support of the proposed development from LCB Senior Living. My wife, Chris, and I are residents at four oh nine West Chesapeake Avenue, where we've lived for the past twenty-one years with our two kids. Our house is one of only seven homes that literally border this former Presbyterian Home property. So our backyard adjoins their backyard. We're about fifteen feet or so away from some of their buildings. And when you're that close, I think you have a fairly unique perspective. You see a lot of things. So for six years, despite clearly posted no trespassing signs, we see people wandering around back there on a daily basis. We've heard breaking glass. We've seen kids climbing through windows, people climbing onto the roof. We've had police lights and searches occurring back there. We've had cars pulling into the, the rear lot of the home and just lingering there. So, you know, these aren't one-off instances. These are many instances over an extended period of time. And really, it's become a hangout space in all the worst ways. And when these activities turn into vandalism, you know, when things like swastikas and obscenities are spray painted on the walls of, of, that, that our home looks out upon, which they have, this is no longer just an eyesore. It's no longer just a building in disrepair, but this is an issue of safety for our families. And unfortunately, you know, as Mr. Marks mentioned, this has been six years, and the few proposals to do anything with the property over that period of time have all been met with challenge after challenge. So I, I think we can all agree that it wouldn't take much to improve what's there, but our view is that waiting isn't working. I think the time to fight development has passed. I think the time to hope that some form of an alternate plan that maybe does a little less of this or a little more of that has passed. We believe this is a proposal that's worthy of our endorsement. As mentioned, we think LCB is a good partner. They seem to be truly invested in caring about a facility that integrates with Southland Hills, that preserves as much of the natural environment as possible, and respects the homes and families around it. But I think Councilman Patoka mentioned earlier, our county's aging, and this feels like it will be a place that is clean, it's green, it's well-maintained, it's safe for those aging folks and for our neighborhood. So it's the only viable plan that we've seen in the last several years. We believe in LCB's mission and their intent, and we, they have our full support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spalding. We appreciate your unique perspective, living so close, and, and the time you took to stay online and share that with us. It's great. We appreciate it. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. I wanted to note Datsi Breckle was our next speaker. Unfortunately, she was on at one point, but she is no longer on. So I'm going to go to the next speaker, who is Jim Tomney. Mr. Tomney, you are on.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, I will keep it short. As per the chairperson's request, basically, I grew up in the area here in Southland Hills. We moved back to the area, so my wife and I have both kind of spent fifty years or more in this area. We both strongly support this proposal for development. There is no white knight that's going to come in and return us to, you know, the old days where, you know, I, I have fond memories. I mean, I walked through this area on my way to school and, you know, in grade school, and my younger son worked at the Presbyterian Home in their dining room. Lots of great fond memories, but I think we have to be realistic. As the prior speaker just mentioned, we have concerns about vandalism and just in general, the decay of the area. It's time to move forward. It's time. We've been doing this now for six years. We've already fended off one particularly bad developer. Let's go with a really solid developer who appears engaged with the community, who listens, and I think has got a great plan for that property. So I really strongly urge you to vote for this. And again, I want to also voice my appreciation for David Marks and everything he's done to try to bring this to a closure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Georgia Chantelis Ruby. You are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I did have a letter written. I had submitted it to you, but in due of all the information that we're now getting, I would like to try to clear the air. The residents on the northern part of Florida Road have not said that they do not want this development to go through, but just as we have just been called unreasonable neighbors, it certainly does show you how our voices over the past six years have been ignored. What our concern is and has been stated repeatedly to Councilman Marks and to all the other parties involved is that we, of all the roads that go around the perimeter, suffer the most because Florida Road is too narrow at twenty-four feet wide. Florida Road has too little parking. We are the entrance into this. We will be fronting the entrance into this development, and we are two-way traffic. We have been begging all of you to please just treat us with respect and widen the road to what was stipulated before for the PUD in 2018, in which we would be getting an additional three feet off the developer's side. That would allow the cars to pass and not be weaving in and out. But instead, all we get from every party here is an excuse and name-calling. And sir, councilman, Mr. Chairman, you said you received two letters. Then, may I suggest, you received three letters than I know of, and you also received a petition in which just about every single house on Florida Road stated that they want these additional three feet. We aren't saying assisted living isn't a good application over here. We actually believe it is a good application. We are saying that you don't get to give every perk and every gift to the developer so that you put our safety and our livability of our homes in peril. I listened to all of you talking about growing up here. I'm a senior citizen. I've lived here for thirty-eight years. I have, I can accept the fact that I'll never be able to set foot on the green space again. It is heartbreaking that you did put a building smack in front of me on Florida Road where no building exists, and you made sure you put it thirty to thirty-five feet in from the property line, unlike any other place on the perimeter. But what I'm fighting for is our ability for safety. We do not have safety on this road. People come very close to being in car accidents, and unless you live on the northern part of Florida Road, you do not understand, and I simply don't understand why that can't be achieved. We are not asking to have anybody make a comment on Georgia Court. We know they don't want their road widened. That's fine. That's their prerogative, but you have ignored us over and over and over again. So the houses that face the frontage on Florida Road, this is our only beautiful view left, and this is where we have the fronts of our houses. We already have a building behind us, a five-story building with a parking lot. So make it so that we are not feeling as though we live in an alleyway, and make it so that we can safely pass. I don't understand it. You have swelched our voices for six years. We have been denied the opportunity to speak at any of the community association meetings, and we are being ignored constantly. So, the end. You've heard, you've heard the truth. Thank you.
Ms. Chantelis Ruby, we certainly appreciate your comments, and certainly appreciate you hanging on so long. I guess, want to be clear, I didn't say I only received two letters. I was just talking about people who had signed up to speak. So, no, no issue there. Councilman Marks, you have anything you want to add, or no? All right, thank you again, ma'am. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Mary Alterman. You are now a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I also want to thank David Marks, who has been here for our community day and night. So thank you, David. My husband and I are longtime residents of Southland Hills, and I'm on, I'm on the board, and we have been concerned about the future of this property for five, over five years. The previous and current proposed developments that could have benefited Southland Hills and Towson have been sabotaged by a very small group of residents, and I will address the idea, all the streets in Southland Hills are too narrow for cars to pass each other. Certainly, where I live on Dixie Drive, you cannot drive down the street. Two cars cannot pass each other. It's time, my point is that it's time for the county council to support legitimate and creative development and start now. The current condition of the property is a blight on our neighborhood and a problem for our community. The weeds are overgrown and spreading, and despite the no trespassing signs, people break into the structure, destroy, steal, and it remains a community safety risk. Hazardous materials have been found, knives, broken glass, and things like that. And people illegally allow their children to play, dogs to run, and excrement not cleaned up on private property. The police have been notified, and they have been involved. The small group of residents who seem against any development want the county to buy the property and establish a park. We have been told that the county, by the county council, county executive's office, that this is not a possibility. The current PUD is consistent with the previous use of the, of the property for over ninety years. The developer has taken the neighborhood considerations into account, traffic, parking, noise, and preserving the front lawn as much as possible. There's appears to be, they appear to want to work with the community, and I appreciate that. It is time for the council to make the, time to the council to work towards development of this property as a priority, and that benefits the extended Towson community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Ms. Alterman. And next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Next speaker is Pat Keller. Mr. Keller. Mr. Keller, you are on as a panelist.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. Pat Keller, I am a board member for Neighbor Space, and we just have one, I suppose it's relatively a technical item. It's relatively small, but it has to do with the wording of the, the third provision, and that is the granting of a waiver if it was necessary, which is fine, no objection to that, or the placement of the open space, no objection to that. However, the way the wording is provided, it could possibly could be construed as also a waiver of any fee in lieu of. And given the scarcity of open space, we feel that the development, if in the event that it is granted a waiver, should also provide a fee in lieu of. And that essentially summarizes our comments.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Councilman Mark.
Yeah, thank you. Pat, thank you, as always, for your testimony and for your service to the county. I believe a lot of the concerns will be alleviated. Do you mind if Mr. Boswick describes the amendment, what we're doing there, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, enough, is this another amendment, or?
It's the same amendment. Basically, it clarifies that, that the waiver should be paid. That there won't be, the waiver, there will be no exemption from the waiver. The fee, the fee.
There you go.
There you go.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Patoka?
Just want to say to Mr. Keller, it's good to hear your voice, and when Pat Keller speaks, we all listen for sure.
Okay. Fantastic. We thank you, Councilman Patoka, Councilman Marks, and Mr. Keller, for your comments and your service to the county. It was greatly appreciated. Ms. Bell Castro, next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Ann Grison. Ms. Grison, you are on as a panelist.
Ms. Grison, you're on.
Is this a little better?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you very much, Chairman Jones and Councilman Marks and councilpeople. My name is Ann Grison. I'm with Preservation Alliance of Baltimore County. We are the county's private nonprofit historic preservation organization, and we are very happy with the plan is, in that it's keeping a good portion of the historic landscape intact. So we're very pleased with that, and also very pleased that the plan is to keep the historic mansion. But we are a little concerned in terms of the current plans, because they do seem to engulf and overwhelm the historic building. The current wings do not overwhelm the building and the mansion, and also allow it for it to be the centerpiece of the property. We would just hope that just as the, the current Southland Hills neighborhood was built around the mansion and in respect and to complement it, that the new wings would do the same. The, the plans actually right now are a little vague as to what will occur with the mansion, how much of it will be kept. So we really can't say that we approve of the plans or disapprove. We're just really not quite certain as to what will still be intact. And another concern is too, the, the keeping of some of the historic trees on the property. These are mature, historic, and carbon-storing trees, and we're just a little concerned that some of them may be cut down, especially the ones closer to the mansion itself. And we are currently in a climate crisis, and just planting new saplings really does not make for a meaningful offset to, to removing historic and mature, and again, carbon-storing trees. And to, to keeping on with, in terms of our current climate crisis and concerns in terms of, of our grave issue right now, we also just want to note that the historic Bosley property and its wings are very important as well. So again, it would be an ideal to keep as much as possible of the wings intact as poss, as, as could be, as the greenest building is the one that's already in existence. And again, we do realize that many people do want a trendier, newer, shiny, shiny building, but right now, in terms of what happens to, to parts of the building that will be demolished and land up in landfills, as, as well as extract, extracting newer materials from our environment, we just think it's important to consider We just think it's important to consider keeping as much as possible of the current wings intact as well. And again, we, right now, we're not either opposed nor are we supportive of the plan. It's still a little bit vague and we like, we'd like to see more, more defined drawings of what will occur with the, especially the historic mansion, as well as a protection plan for some of the historic trees on the property.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Ms. Del Castro, next speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Michael Ruby. For some reason, I cannot extract Mr. Ruby from the attendee list. I don't know if he's on by phone or what device he's on with, but I cannot make him a panelist and I'm not able to unmute him. So, for time's sake, I'm going to move on to the next speaker and if we can get whatever technical issues straightened out. The next speaker is Todd Baker. Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker, you are on as a panelist. You can unmute your, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm calling in support of this proposal. You know, I believe this is a low impact and highly desirable option. The developers have been very transparent with the community. They've been considerate of suggestion changes by the neighbors. These changes include things like design and open property concept and preservation of, of really much of the historic structure. And I really think this, you know, the proposal is better than most alternatives for, for the Bosley space. And it, it just seems to me that we're passing up, you know, over the last six years. We've been passing up some decent opportunities for the hope of a, you know, long shot of a conservation easement, which is just, in, in my mind, unrealistic, based on conversations I've had. And I think it's been validated by what I've, what I've heard here today in some of the testimony. I, I think that these delays make it more likely that we could end up with a bad option. That, that would bring a, you know, high impact, a net, a negative impact to the community. And I just feel like it's really important that we move forward without further delay. Because what, what these delays do is they, they erode community confidence that the ultimate solution is going to bring vibrancy back to the neighborhood and preserve our property values. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your comments. Mr. Baker, and next speaker, Ms. Del Castro.
Let me try Mr. Ruby one more time. Mr. Ruby.
And Ms. Danielle Nobles, you're, you're on the on deck circle.
Actually, I'm trying Mr. Ruby again. Mr. Ruby.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Excellent, I'm a resident of Florida Road. The winter of eighteen sixty-three in Washington, Washington DC was bleak, dark and desolate for more reasons than the weather. The war to preserve the fledgling country was not going well after the North had suffered a series of defeats. Despite President Abraham Lincoln's entreaties to engage, General McClellan was doing his best to avoid the Confederates, though he outnumbered them and was better supplied. Meanwhile, the morale of the Army of the Potomac was deteriorating. And editorials and newspapers from Maine to Maryland were questioning Lincoln's ability to win the war. Against this backdrop, Lincoln's cabinet members met to devise a plan. Secretary of War Edwin Stanton suggested Lincoln issue a series of announcements saying the North was defeating the South and that the end of the conflict was in sight. The other members of the cabinet turned to Lincoln for his response. "How many legs does a dog have?" Lincoln asked the bewildered Stanton. "Four," said Stanton, a critic of Lincoln who would later be won over by the lanky chief executive. "And how many dogs does a dog, how many legs does a dog have if you count the tail a leg?" After a pause, Lincoln confidently answered his own question. "Four." In so doing, he astutely made clear that calling a tail a leg does not give the dog five legs. Resolution twenty-eight twenty-two is a five-legged dog. Despite his moniker, the residence of Southland Hills will be assessed by state taxation officials as a multi-unit commercial operation voiced upon a one-hundred-year-old residential community. Contrary to the best interests of the neighborhood, Towson Town and Baltimore County. Despite agonizing attempts warping the project's layout, the Bosley mansion will be obscured, not saved. Despite claims of a tail serving as a leg, there is no enhanced design, only the overriding of the existing low-density residential zoning. And no community benefit, only required open space, both elements that define a PUD. And there will be no improvements to a road system that was designed for Model T cars, but is being asked to accommodate modern fire safety equipment and twenty-first century traffic loads, thereby threatening the safety of the surrounding homeowners. We live in an area when many dogs are given five legs. Pronouncements are made and opinion is given to that pronouncement, thus changing the facts and creating a desired reality. When this fact-altering work is intentionally perpetrated by elected officials, trust in our government is eroded and the ability to lead is erased, something Abraham Lincoln intuitively knew. Today's proliferation of lies is a madness that needs to stop. Normal dogs do not have five legs and to count the tail leg is absurd. Resolution twenty-eight twenty-two is a five-legged dog that should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nobles and Mr. Ruby. Mr. Ruby, okay, I'm sorry. It's been wrong, Mr. Ruby, that's right. We missed it. So, we'll have, let's see, Valiant, Alman, Alman, Mudd.
We're on Danielle Nobles next, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Nobles, Mrs. Nobles.
I'm here.
Time to give people a little heads up on who's coming up.
I hear you. Ms. Nobles.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Danielle Nobles. I live at four zero eight Carolina Road and I am for the proposed redevelopment, redevelopment plan. And I sort of can double up what Jack Spalding and Todd Baker said, so I won't ramble on here. But I just, as a homeowner, definitely want to see something cleaned up in that area. I love the idea of preserving, but more importantly, it just, it needs to happen because it is dangerous to our families, knowing that people are sneaking in, vandalizing. And I walk down Florida Road every day and it really is, and I sort of see all of the overgrown landscape. And as a resident, I think having seniors as our new neighbors is about as good as it gets. So it's, in my opinion, the best plan we've had. And not to mention the actual design looks beautiful. So I'm looking forward to seeing it and hope it all goes through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nobles. Next speaker, Ms. Del Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, and in your request, our next speaker is Jackie Valet and followed by Jeremy Tolman. Ms. Valet.
Hello. Hi, thank you for taking my call. Thank you to the council members. I am Jackie Valet. I'm a resident of Baltimore County for over twenty-four years and a Southland Hills resident for about thirteen. My family and I have, you know, enjoyed the Presbyterian home when it was a senior living space several years back. As a board member and someone who took my children to activities, we've always partnered and collaborated with the home to bring great neighborhood programs, volunteer opportunities for, for kids, as well as holiday events that took place in the home or on the land of the home. And so I'm looking forward to this proposed, you know, this proposed idea for using this land again as a senior living place. And I thank you for your time.
Well, we thank you so much for your comments and joining us this evening. Next speaker, Ms. Del Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Earlier in the beginning, we, I called upon Ms. Dotsey Bregel. She, that was, got off the meeting, she is back on. So I'm going to call upon her next before I call upon Mr. Tolman. Dotsey, Ms. Bregel.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
You may be. Hi, so I live at the corner of Florida and Chesapeake Avenue. And the reason for my comment is about the widening of Florida. We are not in favor of widening Florida Road or, or Georgia Court. Because as we understand it, traffic will, all traffic to the new development will enter directly behind our home. So traffic will not go any further down Florida, past one Florida. There is no reason for anyone that's going to the, to this new development to drive past the only entrance way to the entire development, which happens to be behind our home. So, in, in our opinion, broadening Florida doesn't need to be done because no traffic will go down there. In the past, traffic, the, the entrance was towards the end of Florida and you would have to drive all the way down Florida and then go in. But no one will go across Georgia Court and no one will really drive past one Florida to enter this new development. So we're not in favor of widening the road. Thank you.
Well, we thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, Ms. Del Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Jeremy Tolman. Mr. Tolman, you are a panelist, you may begin your testimony.
Good evening, my name is Jeremy Tolman and I live with my wife and kids at four oh nine Georgia Court, directly across the street from the subject property. Out of respect for everybody's time, I'm going to keep this short. My family supports the PUD for the residents of Southland Hills. I agree with the comments from Dave Edwards, Jack Spalding, and other neighbors in support of this plan. Although we are in favor of this proposal, we would like to see the proposed architecture improved and simplified. The design as shown doesn't present as integral to the surrounding neighborhood. The developers have been good listeners, transparent with their plans, and generous with their time. We are hopeful they will be able to improve the architectural design and make this a tremendous success. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and I appreciate you staying on the call so long. Next speaker, Ms. Del Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Chris Mudd. Mr. Mudd, you are on as a panelist, you may begin your testimony.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. And I'll, I'll try and keep this very brief. I will keep it very brief. As I was listening, I just, I just wanted to mention that I think, and I've been, as the council knows, I've been in land use and zoning work in this county for over fifteen years now. As I heard all this unfold, I was thinking what good fortune this project is. It, I think it's fortunate that the community has, has encountered a developer who is so engaging with the community and willing to work with them and listen to them and respond, be responsive to them. The developers has great fortune that the community's been so responsive to them. And has been providing, you know, great feedback and been cooperative and collaborative throughout this effort. And then I think everybody has been very fortunate to council, with Councilman Marks's leadership here. As we've heard tonight, there are certainly some folks in the community who are critical of this. And, and that's not new for any development. As all the council members know, you face criticism all the time. And I can say on behalf of our client, LCB, that we're very appreciative of Councilman Marks's leadership. And, and it sounds like many in the community are as well. And I think that what he's doing here represents really something that the critical mass of people in this community really want to see happen. And I hope the council recognizes that after this evening. Just want to clarify a couple of things from some of the testimony. To reiterate, this building is not historic. The Landmarks Preservation Commission rejected it as being placed on, or when it was attempted to be placed on landmarks list. So it enjoys no historic preservation. However, the developer has recognized that the community at large would like to see preservation of, of portions of the facade, which they're working to do and in fact, will be doing. Also, there was a mention of historic trees. There likewise are no historic trees here. But, but the developer has heard these concerns throughout the process and has engaged with a, is engaged with a, an arborist to ensure that as many trees as possible can be preserved as we make it through the process. Regarding the widening, just for some in the community, this, this process and where we are with regard to the widening here, it's going to ultimately be up to the Department of Public Works and Transportation and the Administrative Law Judge on whether or not the widening occurs. But this resolution signals what it appears to be, again, the critical mass of the community wants, which is no widening. And that's why it's presented in that particular way. And then the last thing I just want to mention again, for the benefit of everyone listening and certainly for the council members as a reminder as well, this process is, is just the beginning. After we get through, this resolution passes, after we get through, we'll be going through the full development review and approval process. We'll be subject to the review and under the watchful eye of all county reviewing agencies. And of course, community input doesn't stop here either. The community will be able to engage as we make our way through community input meeting as well as through a public hearing. So, we certainly hope that the council received a positive message tonight. And we ask that the council approve this resolution on Tuesday evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You very much, Chris.
Next speaker, Ms. Del Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, this is our last speaker for this item and it is Christie, and I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Knoppel. Ms. Knoppel, you are now on as a panelist.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thanks, I'm trying to start my video as well. I'm a Baltimore County public school teacher, so I'm a little familiar with doing Zoom meetings like this, but not exactly this particular website. My name is Christie Knoppel. My husband Pete and I are here, he's off camera. I have been a lifelong resident of Baltimore County in Towson for over fifty years and a resident of Southland Hills community for six years. We moved in, in June of two thousand sixteen, shortly after the Presbyterian home closed. So the entire time we've lived in Southland Hills, this home has been closed down and waiting for whatever the new lifespan it was going to have, was going to be. I want to first start by saying thank you for speaking with us tonight. I know it's been a long night. Thank you especially to Councilman Marks. I want to thank him for his advocacy in our community. I'm a former resident of Gaywood and of the Rogers Forge area. And I know how hard he works for our neighborhoods to really listen to the folks here in Towson and I appreciate that. I also appreciate his letter from September of two thousand twenty-one that he addressed to Mr. Delbert Adams on behalf of the community shortly after the landmark status was rejected for this property on Southland Hills. He was trying to advocate for that for the folks who had spoken earlier, I believe, as well. And he said that he wanted even to make sure that Mr. Adams could potentially pursue other options for the property that would maintain the historic mansion, the specimen trees, the stone walls, some of the existing park-like setting of the front lawn. And I appreciate him going to bat for all of us in that way, even after the landmark status option did not go forward. I do want to thank very much the LCB folks. Unlike one of the previous speakers who said they were not able to be heard, I don't know why that is because we had multiple opportunities at community meetings. Before COVID, at Carver High School, we, we went and spoke with the original developers that were going to do a proposal that did not go through. LCB has done a community Zoom call that we were able to all be on and speak and answer and ask questions. And so I'm not sure exactly why that person feels like their voice was not heard. And I'm sorry because we got multiple emails inviting everyone in the neighborhood to attend those planning and feedback sessions. I'm representing eleven people on a group text right now who are not able to be here. Six of them are employees of Baltimore County Public Schools and have back-to-school nights and other events. Three of them are administrators with Baltimore County Public Schools and all of them are my neighbors in Southland Hills. And so I would like to say that eleven of them have written letters to you all in favor of this PUD. And I appreciate that. One of them is also a resident of Florida Road who is in one of those first houses. I know someone mentioned a petition from Florida Road. And I would like to state that I believe there are only six houses that directly face this adjacent property. And I know for a fact that one of them spoke in favor of the development tonight. And another one has written you a letter in favor of that. So I caution you to say, when you hear about a petition from Florida Road in a neighborhood with two hundred and twenty-five homes, I'm not sure exactly how many people have been able to sign that position, petition. And so I encourage you to look at those numbers. A couple of things that I just wanted to quickly add, I am echoing and dittoing as, as much as I can, things that Todd Baker said, things that Mr. Spalding said, things that my neighbor and friend Jackie Valet has said. But I would also like to add that when I spoke about some of my concerns with the folks from LCB and specifically Mr. Doyle in our Zoom call, I asked him about the park-like setting and the fact that kids play lacrosse on the park-like setting of the lawn. And neighbors walk and have walked their dogs there before. And would there be a fence erected or something that would make? And would there be a fence erected or something that would make us feel like this part of our community, we had been shut off from? And in fact, no, the exact opposite was indicated. While not saying it was going to be a public park for our neighborhood, which of course it's not going to be or be able to be, one of the things that Mr. Doyle clearly said and the folks from LCB said was that they welcome for their seniors, the interaction with the neighbors. They look forward to the seniors being perhaps some of our elderly grandparents of our children. They look forward to employing--
Ms. Knoppel.
Oh, sorry, my--
I'm sorry, I mean, interrupt. It's okay. Yeah, you're out of time. You can just--
One last quick thing. The parking, they did say that they have transportation that will drive their seniors, so it will now impact parking in our area and I appreciated that. And perhaps they'll get to drive over to the Baltimore County Public Library in Towson, which we love and think is the greatest, by the way. So thank you for letting me speak and we are supportive of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much as well.
Thank you so much for your comments and I certainly appreciate your eye-keeping and educating our children and all of your colleagues that are joining you. And you know, we can't thank you enough for what you do each and every day to, you know, provide guidance and education to our children. It's a very, very noble and a very important occupation. And we thank you and we thank you for hanging on so long to give your comments and share them with us. And Councilman Marks, we're going to give you the last word on this subject tonight.
I just want to thank everyone who testified and would appreciate your consideration of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will move right on to our next issue, which was you, Councilman Marks, page 96. Resolution 25-22.
Okay, that's the Lock Raven Resolution, correct?
Yes, Lock Raven Commercial Revitalization.
Thank you very much. This resolution adjusts the boundaries of the Lock Raven Commercial Revitalization District. I delayed consideration of this several weeks ago and my understanding is that the associates of Lock Raven Village now support the consideration of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any speakers for that. Any questions, comments on the note? Hearing none, thank you very much. We'll move on to page 10. Bill 56-22, Compensation for the County Council as Well as the Retirement Benefits. This is something that I, just sort of like a house cleaning issue. I've been looking at a number of issues in the past. You've noticed we've fixed some pension issues for other employees. And this is something that I always felt like we needed to do, which is to bring the pension, or at least the fact that there's no limit or no cap, which is the same as other county employees in Baltimore County. And that's all this does is to bring us in line with other county employees. To Councilman Batoka's statement earlier on, I know you had inquired about other jurisdiction salary. And let me just say that, let me pull my list out. Let's print it out so we can look at it. And I will go down the list with you for everybody who happened to be listening. If you still are interested in that information, I'm prepared to give it to you. I know the hour is late. Do you still want to hear it, Councilman Batoka?
We've been on this long. If it's near you, yes. If you have to look for it, we can talk offline.
No, it is here in front of me. Just give me one second to pull it up. One second to pull it up. Okay, so let's start with the largest jurisdiction in the state of Maryland, Montgomery County. Montgomery County has non-council members. The president makes $156,000 and the council members make $142,000. Then we go to the second largest jurisdiction in the state, Prince George's County. The chairman makes $133,000 and the rest of the council, they have a vice chair at $130,000 and the vice chair makes $126,000. And then we go to us in Baltimore County where we're, you know, we're talking about $70,062 is where we are now. And those things will go up by $6,000 to 76 to 68 respectively, which is, in my opinion, a bargain. Now, we go down the list beyond us, like Baltimore City, for example, which has 300,000 less people than us. The chair makes, in Baltimore City, the president makes $128,000 and other council members make $74,000. All of these, we are below, even with the increases and the council has not received a raise since 2014. And I've always been supportive of us coming up with another system that does not allow us to go so long before we receive a small incremental increase like the county employees, so it never looks so big, even though this is by far not big at all. I know firsthand how hard each and every council member worked. Just looking at this last development, if you, Councilman Marks, there's no way I can say I put in the hours that you did on that project. But I will say this, over the last six years, all of us have been involved to a certain degree or another as we work through this issue, as well as every other issue in Baltimore County that comes before us. So a local bribe costs us the same as everybody else and we make very important decisions here. So I took it upon myself to say we need to move forward with the compensation as well as to fix the cap and the pension, which is consistent with every other employee. So if there's anybody want to take shots, take them at me and not anybody else. Any questions, the comments, or speakers?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a comment.
Go right ahead.
I do believe there's a need for election reform in terms of how our jobs are classified. I think each of us, while Baltimore County classifies its council members as a part-time job, I think that it actually is a full-time job. Now, some members have chosen to take on a second full-time job or a second part-time job because the salaries are modest and sometimes our expenses exceed what our salaries are, especially, you know, many of us, I think half the council members are paying college tuition, no, more than half, actually. And so we have this full-time job and I think the nature of what the council does has changed. For example, let's take one aspect of being a council member, constituent services. So there was a time where a constituent service came in one of two ways. It came in through a phone call or it came in one of three ways. Through a phone call, through a piece of mail that came in through the USPS, or it came through at a community meeting. Now, the portals for constituent services include a text, an email, a social media post, a Twitter. And so to, and each constituent and deserve, and I think it's appropriate, feel that those portals for which they have shared a constituent concern should be attended to and we all try to attend to. There are just so many places for constituent services to arrive, not only to each of us individually, but some come in through the council office for, you know, to all of our council boxes. So I just want to say that just trying to harness all of this is a fault of this one component. This one component, constituent services, is a full-time job in itself. So I know it's late into the evening, but it's something I did want to share with my colleagues and the members that are here.
Thank you, Councilman Batoka. And I would just add that, just to be real quick. I know everybody works extremely hard, but you missed one, Councilman Batoka. You missed a couple. You missed quite a few. Like when you walk into the supermarket and your wife's outside in the car and you're supposed to grant some eggs and run out and you're stopped two or three times. And my wife knows that I don't turn anybody down. So she's sitting in the car texting me, calling me, saying, what is going on? Well, a constituent have an issue. They see me, they take advantage of the opportunity. I'm not discouraging you at all. I signed up for the job. But you know, those constituent issues come through for all of us, wherever we are. Even on a cruise ship, I got a constituent issue. But that said, we will move forward because the hour is late and we appreciate everybody hanging in there. But we'll guess--
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman?
Yeah. Yeah. I need to say that I do not support the retirement benefit portion of the bill. The state legislature's benefits are limited to two-thirds of the salary. If you take a look at county employees, this legislation would basically say after 20 years that a council member can get 100% of his or her salary. Regular county employees in the new system would have to work 70 years to get 100%. Those in the older system would have to work 55 years to get 100%. So I don't support that portion of the bill. I just want you to know that. And I'm not criticizing. I'm just, that's my opinion.
We certainly appreciate it and I won't, you know, we will just keep it moving. But believe me when I tell you, I would love to get some of the salaries of some of our employees. As I guarantee you, I'll probably work just as hard. That's coming from a guy who spent 33 years, 32 years as a fire chief. That said, I'll keep it moving. Any additional question or comments? Any speakers?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Quirk?
Yeah, just a quick question for you and maybe our secretary. Given Councilman Quirk's concern, is there a way we can vote on two different components of the bill? So that way he can maybe, it sounds like he supports the salary side, not the pension side. So is there a way that, hey, we can do a vote on the salary and then do a vote on the pension as well? Just to, so he can vote kind of what he thinks without yes or no on the total bill? Is that a way to do that?
Mr. Quirk, it's one bill. It's not like an amendment where we could separate amendments. So there's no way to separate that into two bills.
I think the comments of Councilman Quirk will be duly noted as it is a part of the record. So, you know, he can take it from there. But I appreciate it, Councilman Quirk.
And I would, and Councilman Quirk is absolutely correct that, you know, I would like to support the salary part and for, you know, the executive and maybe even for our, well, you know who. She's sitting here looking at--
You're supposed to do like this and talk about it.
Yeah. So, but--
Turn off my camera.
So I'm not looking at you anymore.
Okay, all right. Any, do we have any speakers for this? I don't--
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, let's move right along. We thank everybody for their comments. We'll move on to, where is my number 19? Oh, we're here 19 already. So we're going to 20, page 14. Mr. Marks, University-Based Retirement Communities.
Thank you very much. Bill 5822 amends the Baltimore County zoning regulations to permit university-based retirement communities as a by-right use in certain areas. University-based retirement communities would be defined as a residential community for those 62 years of age or older located at least in part on an institution of higher learning. The idea here is to create an environment where seniors can learn and enjoy the uses at a college or university. And you're going to hear from Gaucho College and Edenwald in northern Towson that want to build this type of facility. It's a very exciting concept that will continue to help Baltimore County accommodate its growing senior population. I am going to offer an amendment that subjects this type of project to the full development review process, including community input. I think that is an excellent change to this legislation. I think the public deserves to have that. Mr. Boswick, do you have anything to add to that?
As you said, Mr. Marks, the amendment that would be offered would, wouldn't, as the council knows, because you recently passed a bill related to limited exemptions that really opened up the process for limited exemptions. The bill is originally drafted, put university-based retirement communities into a category of development that would be, that would receive a limited exemption. This amendment would just, would still allow the developer to pursue a limited exemption. They would just have to make their case before the DRC.
Right.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I support Councilman Mark's amendment regarding a public input hearing in this issue. Thank you.
Sure. And I don't want to go backwards, but I guess realize I didn't say something. To your point, Councilman Quirk, we're going to be working on some other issues as well for other county employees that may have fallen into a older system or newer system, I should say. But that's another day. I don't want to do a spoiler, you know, spoiler alert. Any questions or comments on the note? Hearing none, let's go to--
Mr. Chair.
Callers, yes. Councilman Randall?
Yeah, it's just a quick question for Councilman Mark. With everything else going on, I have to admit that I have not yet read this particular bill and certainly will in advance of Monday's legislative session. So I wanted to ask Councilman Mark, the title of the bill is University-Based Retirement Communities. Would this include our CCBC campuses as well? Community colleges are certainly, they're not universities, but they are institutions of higher education with potential-- they have land with a potential for this type of community. I'm just curious about that. Would they be included in this legislation?
I think the criteria is pretty specific and Mr. Boswick could probably also address this. The other thing with the community colleges and with Towson University is they are governmental institutions. So they're largely exempt from a lot of our zoning requirements. So I think the purpose here was more to capture a private institution like Gaucho College.
And the only thing I would add, Mr. Crandall, to what Mr. Marks stated is that in the bill, it does state, it is really a more Towson-centric bill.
Location-specific, yeah.
Right. And it does say that this type of community would be permitted in all zones, but would need to be located in or adjacent to the DT overlay district.
Right. I mean, you think you could certainly model it in other places, but yeah, it's a pretty specific piece of legislation.
It is an interesting concept. So thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
And it's certainly malleable for future use, I think. The way it's been drafted, it could be modified in the future and used as a mechanism elsewhere.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Boswick. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Crandall, any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, we have some speakers on this item.
Yep, we have five speakers and we will go ahead and start with the speakers in the order of Malone, Doyle, Edward, Spalding.
I have Mr. Mark Beggs as the first speaker on this item, Mr. Chair. Mr. Beggs, you're on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony. You have to unmute yourself, Mr. Beggs.
There we go. Am I good?
Yes, you may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. I have to say, after listening to all of you for the last three hours and 47 minutes, I deeply appreciate each and every one of you and the time that you give to the community. So my name's Mark Beggs and I'm the president and CEO of Edenwald Senior Living, located at 800 Southerly Road in Towson. I joined the organization in January of 2019. Edenwald was founded in 1881 as the general German aged people's home of Baltimore and has been serving Baltimore city and county for 100, for over 141 years. First as the Greishenheim and now as Edenwald Senior Living. Edenwald purchased land that was previously a part of Goucher College and relocated the entire organization to this site. In 1985, the first residents moved in, into Edenwald, a life plan community offering a full continuum of services. In 2008, Edenwald opened its expansion, the terraces, adding 60 additional apartments. Today, Edenwald serves approximately 400 residents across all levels of care and employs approximately 280 individuals. In our 141-year history, services to the aged has continued to evolve and change. Seniors today have different desires and expectations than those who first lived at the Greishenheim in the late 1800s. Seniors today want to be engaged, they want to continue to learn and grow as individuals, and they don't wish to be in an age segregated community. Of the nearly 2,000 life plan communities nationally, there are only approximately 100 with some type of university affiliation, some more meaningful than others. It is the fastest growing segment of senior living market, given the demands and expectations of seniors today. By 2050, those over the age of 85 will triple to 17.9 million and those over the age of 60 will balloon to over 2 billion. At this time, there are no university-based retirement communities in the state of Maryland. This text amendment will allow the possibility of organization like ours to further assess the feasibility of this type of senior living product and potentially make it possible for the first university-based retirement community in Maryland to be located in Baltimore County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize, this is Elkaster, I should say, by the way. I tried to give a, a heads up to the others and I had it missed wrong. I guess it's the roar at it else and alone, but go ahead, this is Elkaster, I'm back in my space.
No problem, Mr. Chair, you're, you're doing multiple things, so totally understandable. Our next speaker is Kent Deveraux and then that's followed by Mr. Martin Ellis. Let me, Mr. Deveraux, Mr. Deveraux. You're on as a panelist.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the members of the county council for the opportunity to contribute a few remarks in support of Baltimore County Bill Number 5822. My name is Kent Deveraux, I'm the president of Goucher College, private nonprofit labor arts college located in Towson. Goucher College has a keen interest in this building, in this bill, and I'd like to provide a little background and history that explains why. Goucher College was originally founded in 1885 as the women's college of Baltimore City. Then in 1921, having outgrown our downtown campus, the college purchased 421 acres in what is today Towson. In the 1950s, the college's 421 acres was first bisected by the construction of Interstate 695. Then in the 1960s, 70s and 80s, the college sold off parcels to finance construction of the new Towson campus. This included not only the land immediately adjacent to our campus where Edenwald, Towson Gate and the Campus Hills residential neighborhoods sit today, but also the Sheraton Hill, Towson Town Center and the Towson United Methodist Church just north of I-65, 695. So all sit on land formerly owned by Goucher College. I mention this only to emphasize the point that Goucher College has been a part of Towson and Baltimore County for over 100 years. Today, our campus comprises 287 largely wooded acres with the academic, residential and athletic facilities occupying approximately only 135 acres at the center, surrounded by a woodlands buffer. We enroll over 2,000 students, approximately 1,100 undergraduate, 900 graduate students who come from across the nation in 48 states and 28 different countries and all who contribute to our local economy. We also employ over 450 full-time faculty and staff, many of whom live within walking or easy driving distance from the campus. Goucher College very intentionally maintains an open campus. Towson residents run, hike, cycle and play tennis for free on our land. We also host a variety of concerts, lectures, film screenings and summer youth campuses on our campus, all at no charge. In short, we strive to be a good neighbor. However, the higher education landscape is changing and while Goucher College has a healthy endowment and a growing student population and is in no danger of going away, we also know that we must evolve with the times. The traditional 18 to 22-year-old demographic that we have traditionally served is projected decline over the next 15 years, along with America's declining birth rates. To remain vital, higher education institutions like ours must innovate. They need to adapt to an aging America and to develop new programs that engage individuals at every stage of their lives. That is why we are especially interested in exploring new models like university-based retirement communities. Innovative models like this would allow us to partner with providers like our neighbor Edenwald, a well-respected and longstanding continuous care community directly adjacent to Goucher's campus to develop new living, learning housing on a small portion of the Goucher's college campus. This will allow us to meet the needs of not only today's retirees, but provide our students with an outstanding opportunity to engage in true intergenerational learning. For these reasons and the others, I would urge the council to vote to approve Baltimore County Bill Number 5822. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, I just have a question for the president. I'm sorry, what?
No, I was telling him to hold on, don't go anywhere.
Okay. President Deveraux, have any male graduates of Goucher ever amounted to anything?
You mean like in politics?
Maybe, yeah, I guess I'm thinking of.
Or education, right?
Politics or education or on the Baltimore City Council or an EPA administrator.
I wasn't thinking of that. I was thinking of.
Somebody closer to himself.
Somebody.
Oh, somebody closer. Oh, yes, yes, Mr. Olshewski is a Goucher College, a proud.
That is a true statement, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Deveraux, listen, we certainly appreciate you taking the time to join us this, this evening. I know it's been a long night and we are absolutely very supportive of Goucher and all the things that college does for our county and what it does for our youth. And we just want to be as supportive as we can because you are a very important member of our community. And we guess happy to have you here and we'll be as supportive as we can. And I know you're in great hands with Councilman Marks and we will do what we have to do to help.
And it's been a pleasure working with the president. He is a terrific leader for that institution.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Elkaster.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker, our last speaker on this item is Martin Ellis. Mr. Ellis, you're on as a panelist, you may begin. You're muted.
I'm trying to unmute.
There you go. Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you. I was supposed to start a video here and it didn't start. Stopped.
Well, you have to give permission for that.
Well, I thought I did. All right, well, I don't want to hold anybody up because I have been waiting since before four o'clock for this opportunity. First of all, I am the person who was undecided, neither for nor against, but undecided. But David Marks, with whom we have a great familiarity because we worked together with Goucher and Edenwald on no fewer than, this is going to be the third occasion. I represent Towson Gate both as a 22-year resident of that condominium development, which not only is adjacent to, but abuts both Edenwald and Goucher. And unfortunately, during the process that this was being formulated, the one neighbor who didn't get consulted for the third time in a row was Towson Gate condominium. I sit on the board of directors as well and am a, in my 50th year of law practice here in Baltimore County. The first objection was that why would this bill exempt from public hearing? Because it is at that point where you get a description of what it is that Goucher, I understand conceptually and support conceptually President Deveraux's desire, along with Mark Beggs at Edenwald, to partner into a new, first time ever in Maryland, anyway, opportunity for a retirement, living and continuing a learning. Towson Gate supports it, I support it. But we never seem to get past not being told, what will it look like? What land will it occupy? What relationship will it bear to its neighbors, both Edenwald and Towson Gate? That amendment goes a long way to solving a lot of this uncertainty. I would urge President Deveraux and President Mark Beggs, the only thing we knew coming into this was that there was a letter of intent to explore this possible opportunity. I don't think I've ever seen a legislative solution to what was just an exploration. I appreciate the fact that with the elimination of that, of that exemption and us having an opportunity to see what is going to be built, where it's going to be built, how it will impact on the three neighbors who have been very good to one another. I think we'll, we'll go a long way towards helping us feel as though Towson Gate is not the far western or eastern, I'm sorry, far eastern forgotten neighbor. We want to be good neighbors as well. We have a great relationships with Edenwald. We've had a great relationship with Goucher over the years and look forward to working with them and with Councilman Marks, who knows that I am a deal maker, not a deal breaker. And, and what I heard was worth the wait. And that is what I wanted this council to understand. We, we, we appreciate very much the hard work every one of you do. I have known about the hard work myself. I appreciate it, I appreciate everyone who, who takes this time. And before the seed goes in the soil, this would be a good project. Yes, ma'am, I'm finished.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to let you know to wrap up your comments, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ellis.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Oh, and by the way, one more thing quickly. I sent an email to every one of the council members this afternoon that analyzed this bill and will be helpful to those unfamiliar with what it says. So look for it in your mailboxes, it was emailed to you. And David, for you, I, I sent one to you directly, plus the one that went to the total council.
Okay, absolutely, thank you for sending that.
Yeah, thank you very much for your comment, sir. And next, we'll move on to page 16, Bill 59-22. And in the absence of Councilwoman Bevins, I'll ask Mr. Boswick, if you could just explain the bill.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. This bill is actually a little bit similar to the bill you just considered and heard about related to university-based retirement how, community. It uses a similar mechanism in that, but instead of university-based retirement community, it is captioned as veterans' housing and treatment campuses. And so this bill defines that, that term as a campus which consists of independent living, housing and offices, providing services which are intended to help veterans and other vulnerable populations get meaningful employment through industry-recognized certification programs, training, job placement and other resources that address underlying barriers to employment. It's also similar in that it is a fairly targeted legislation bill in that it, it establishes a new section in the zoning regulations for this use, just as the other bill does. And it puts the location as being permitted by right in the MLIM and MH zones if located within a mile of a hospital and community college within the boundaries of the Philadelphia Road Corridor Study. So that, that mapped area is where the bill is where this, this, this veterans' housing and treatment campus would be permitted. There, there are requirements for density for commercial uses at 10,000 square feet per acre for offices and, and 20 residential dwelling units per acre for residences. And there are also setback requirements and the like. So that's basically a summary of that bill and I'm sure Mrs. Bevins would welcome your support.
Thank you, Mr. Boswick, and we thank Councilwoman Bevins for her hard work on this issue as well. Are there any questions or comments from them?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question. Mr. Boswick, for the Goucher bill and this bill, are there any, if, if I am not a graduate of a college or university, can I still live in that building that they're proposing at Edenwald?
I, I believe so. I don't think you have to be a graduate of, of that institution or any other. But I, I think that would be better for, for Mr. Marks or Mr. Deveraux perhaps to elaborate on. I may be wrong.
Yeah, I, I'm sure that's not, I'm sure the intention is that anyone who wants to live there could, but Councilman Marks, go ahead.
Other 62 and older, correct?
Right, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I would believe so, as long as the age requirements are met, right?
Okay, so, so it's not really a restricted community, except for age.
Right.
Right, okay.
I mean, I think that there's also an idea about faculty members living there, right? Or for alumni who may come back and want to go to concerts and go to class, audit classes, things like that.
Yeah.
Wait, you can move to Western Maryland College.
There you go.
Where, where is, I don't know, that doesn't exist anymore, I don't think, yeah. For those who don't know, that's where I went to college.
I think Mr. Quark is a proud graduate as well.
Yes, he is, yes, he is.
And Don Mohler, our former county executive and Alan.
Alan Sauerbrun.
And, and Kate Spire and a whole bunch of others, a whole bunch of others.
Artie Alperstein.
Quite a distinguished crowd. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, I guess we'll move on to our last bill of the evening. And once again, it's the Councilman David Marks Show.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry to be going through this at 8:06 PM. So this is a repeat performance. Bill 5222 amends the zoning regulations regarding changeable copy signs. Table sign regulations defines changeable copy as quote, "an on-premises sign displaying a message which may be changed periodically, manually, by electric or electronic controls or any other means." I'm going to ask Tom Boswick to provide some historical context for this bill because it can be a bit confusing, but I've always insisted that this, this legislation really is designed to just clean up legislation, clean up the code to reflect what the county council tried to do more than a decade ago. So, Mr. Boswick, do you mind discussing that?
No, I, I don't mind at all, Mr. Marks. I, I think I'll, I'll go back to 2008 if that's far enough because there was a signed bill then that was 106-08 and it, it specifically dealt with Section 450.7. that was 106-08, and it specifically dealt with Section 450.7, Paragraph B, which is the same paragraph that this bill deals with. And back then, back then, there were two, back then, that section dealt with electronic change, well, no, dealt with changeable copy signs, and dealt with them in the context of being located in a planned shopping center or any other commercial establishment in a business zone. And within that parameter, it listed additional limitations, and there were two limitations already on the books, and then 106-08 added two other limitations. And one of those was, and let me go back to the bill real quick, the first two that were already on the books were that a freestanding changeable copy sign could be erected only as an integral part of another otherwise permitted enterprise or joint identification sign, and then the second one was that up to 50% of the erected area of the sign of a permitted enterprise or joint ID sign could be devoted to changeable copy, and then it was later modified to state that this requirement did not apply to a sign within a TOD in the CT District of Owens Mills. In Bill 106-08, there were two other provisions added to that limitation regarding changeable copy signs accessory to a planned shopping center or any other separate commercial establishment in a business zone. It added that animated signs required special exception approval by the zoning commissioner, and electronic changeable copy signs were not to be permitted in the CR district or outside the Eardle or in historic districts. So that bill added those two things, particularly the last one, which is that electronic changeable copy was not to be permitted in the CR district or outside the Eardle or in historic districts. This is how it has been for the last 14 years or so. There was a later bill, 3-14, that I believe Mr. Marks sponsored then, six years ago, or I'm sorry, eight years ago, to state that electronic changeable copy signs were also not to be permitted within 250 feet of national scenic byways as designated by the US DOT. So that's where we are today, and then what has happened is, is there has been a little bit of conflict between just what that one section says about electronic changeable copy signs not being permitted in a CR district or outside the Eardle or in historic districts, and whether that just applies to planned shopping centers or separate commercial establishments in a B-zone, a business zone. And I know this can get complicated and confusing, but the zoning office has, I think, taken the opinion that it doesn't, it's not a blanket prohibition outside the Eardle, whereas the administrative law judges in the last three, in three recent opinions from 2018, 19, and let me just make sure I've got that right, in, yes, in 20, in a case in 2018, one in 2019, and one in 2020, the administrative law judge interpreted that paragraph, that sub-paragraph regulation, to expressly prohibit changeable copy signs outside of the Eardle. And then the two cases after that in 19 and 20 basically stated the same thing. So I think what Mr. Marks is asking me to convey is that this bill is designed to, or is purposed to sort of take away the ambiguity and provide clarity in the law itself to not allow electronic changeable copy signs outside the Eardle in any event.
Councilman Mark?
Oh, that's it?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
You're already here, Councilman Catch.
Yeah, Mr. Secretary, I have a, I got a call from the Jacksonville Volunteer Fire Company. They have a sign out front of the station that the background is lit, but the letters that they put on the sign, you know, they have the letters and they put them up like a movie billboard. They want to know if, under this bill, whether they would be able to change their sign to allow for, to take a computer and, in essence, type in whatever the message is on their sign. Now, to me, that's not really, it is changeable, but you know, when I think of changeable signs, I think the ones that, as you're looking at them, they change. I believe it's every 15 seconds is the county law regarding, they can't change more than every 15 seconds. Would they be allowed to install anything like I've described? Not that they're going to move, it's just that they're going, they would like to be able to use the computer system to put the message on the board and not have to go out on a ladder and actually put the letters up.
I think, Mr. Catch, if what they want to do does meet the definition of an electronic changeable copy sign, and it sounds like, just, you know, at first blush, it may, unless they, if they qualified under, as like a government entity that would not be subject to the regulations, then I think they would be subject to not being, if they're outside the Eardle, not being allowed to do that.
There, okay, so a volunteer fire company is not a governmental entity, correct? It's not.
I believe that's the case.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Boswick, so they, so according to Councilman Catch, they can't, they can't do it?
Right.
If they are outside the Eardle and they are trying to erect a electronic changeable copy sign, they would not be able to do so.
What if it doesn't, if, as Councilman Catch suggested, if it, there's a time element to it, like it doesn't change for a day, or two days, or a week, or whatever that timeframe might be?
I think because it's still electronic changeable copy, it's still, it would be within that prohibition.
Okay, thank you. Well, let me just say that, Councilman Marks, I certainly appreciate your effort, and we all are very proud of the Eardle. The Eardle was designed to restrict development outside of a demarcation line by restricting water and sewer to that area. So I certainly am supportive of the Eardle and what it was designed to do. I think the mere fact that we're talking about something from 2008 and 2022, this is a new world. I cannot imagine a person putting up a sign in 2022 that would require them to go outside and put letters on a ladder or stick and affix it to a sign. I was told one time, a business without a sign is a sign without business. Everybody knows I've been a big advocate for electronic signs. I want to see electronic sign in front of every one of our schools, I want to see electronic sign in front of every one of our libraries, because it is a way of conveying information to the public when they drive by. People say, well, how about sending emails? Well, you know what, you know how many emails I get? And if I'm riding down the road and I can see the nice services that are being provided at the library or school, after school night, it will be very helpful. And as it relates to businesses, I think this is an anti-business bill. If I own a gas station out in the Eardle, outside the Eardle, I may want to be able to change the prices from inside the building and not have to go outside like it's 1965 and put a letter on a stick and put it up in the air and try to put it on a sign. This is a new world we live in, and I'm not advocating for Las Vegas-style signs, but to your point, Councilman Catch, you're talking about changing the copy, changing what it says. This bill would outlaw any electronic sign that will allow you to change what it says, whether it changes one week, or one month, or one hour. This bill would outlaw that, and for that reason, I will be opposed to the- Any additional question, comments, or rebuttal, Councilman Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree, the world is much different than in 2008. 2008, we didn't have Facebook. We had MySpace, which mostly teenagers were on. Today, we have Facebook, we have lots of ways that fire departments and organizations and schools can communicate their messages without cluttering up the landscape with visual pollution. So I would agree, the world has changed since 2008, and it's because a lot of communication is done by social media.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Do we have a speaker? We don't have any speakers for this, do we, Chris?
Yes, we do, we have one speaker, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
That speaker, and I'm hoping that I have the correct person, I think they're on by phone, is Bruce Morgan. Mr. Morgan?
I'm here, can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, all right. Mr. Chairman, council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you regarding Bill 5222. I reside in Longfield Estates in Barnum County side of Kingsville, and I'm also an active board member of the Greater Kingsville Civic Association. I'm asking for your support of Bill 5222 that will clarify the long-held interpretation and intent of the prohibition of electronic changeable signs in rural Barnum County outside the Eardle as per the wishes of rural Barnum County residents. I will skip the history since that's already been covered, but most of us move to rural Barnum County for its beauty and limited commercial exposure, but the recent appearance of several of these signs in our area has introduced an unwanted and unnecessary blight that not only commercializes our rural roadways, but becomes a driver distraction, particularly on our roads that are darker and unlit, where these effects are amplified. And if you've driven Philadelphia Road a couple months ago, or some of these other streets, and you've seen this, you know exactly what I'm talking about. They lend a carnival atmosphere to an otherwise bucolic nature of our beautiful county landscapes and country roads which are enjoyed by all county residents. In my small community of 40 homes, 22 of my neighbors have expressed their support for 5222 in an email sent to all council members on August 22. I believe that represents an extraordinary percentage level of support for this most important bill, and I believe it's representative of the sentiment across rural Barnum County. We're asking support for 5222 that simply clarifies and solidifies that original intention and its long practice. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today.
We certainly appreciate your comments, and we appreciate you hanging in there for so long to make your voice heard, and we certainly appreciate it very much. Any additional questions or comments from the members before we sign off? I want to thank-
Thank you.
Somebody else? I want to thank all the callers who stood on the line for an awful long time to make their voices heard, we certainly appreciate it very much, and I want to thank all the council members for your attentiveness, and, you know, everybody have yourself a wonderful evening, and sorry it was so long. This is what democracy looks like.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.